Board meeting tonight, if you would join us, we'd like to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Roll call Nikki.
Mrs. Applebaum here. Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman. Mrs. Hopper here. Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Sieratino? Mr. Jacob?
Um, I guess I should have started with the roll call. Call for closed session, there is none. Special recognitions, there are none. Additions, corrections, modifications to the agenda, there are none. At this point, we will entertain citizen statements. According to the sign up sheet that I have here. Thank you. I'd like to ask you to say, state your name and your address when I call you. I may not say your name correctly, so if you would help me out there. And you'll have three minutes. We might have to cut that down a little bit, we've got quite a few and we'd like to get through these in an hour. You might consider if your statement is similar to someone else's, to let them say it for you, if you want. Or you can also give the board a written statement, if you'd like to do that. We'll begin with Ashil McNamick, is that correct?
No.
Very good. If you would come to the podium and make your statement please, you have three minutes.
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay. Oh, cool, it sits. So, oh, hello. Um, so my name is Asher McMe, I am a senior at Parkway West High School. And I'm here to show my support and I want these revisions to go through. Because basically, why don't we deserve a more comprehensive and LGBTQ inclusive curriculum? As an LGBTQ student, I think it's really important that we talk about all these identities. And I think that we have the right to be educated and with abstinence only education, we don't get educated in other ways to protect ourselves. Um, we are not being educated on how to be safe when we do end up having sex. We don't, why don't we deserve to learn about chlamydia, which is an STI that we have rampant in St. Louis? Um, why don't we deserve to learn about safe forms of sex, other than condoms? Cause there's so many other versions of safe sex that we can use. Why don't we deserve to learn about other kinds of sex? Why does it only heterosexual sex? Why do, um, oh. Why is there no inclusion of LGBTQ at all? As an LGBTQ student, I feel like I deserve to be included. I deserve to get knowledge because knowledge is power. I feel like I need to not teach boys about consent. I feel like it's not fair that I have to teach boys all the time what no means and I'm tired of it. I'm, my health is just as important as anyone else's. I deserve to be safe and I deserve to know how to be safe. I'm tired of not being included in my school's curriculum. I'm tired of not being able to learn or explain my identity. Please tell me why I'm not in my sex ed class and tell me why my sex ed class tells me not to do things. Please tell me why I'm forced to go and learn on my own, why I'm forced to be scared and not understand what's happening when something happens, when I get an unplanned pregnancy, when I get an STI and I don't know where to go. Please tell me why I don't get the best education in one of the best school districts all around. I just feel like it's not fair that I don't get the right to feel safe. So, why doesn't my safety matter? Thank you.
Thank you very much. To all of you that give a statement tonight, you will be getting a response from the board in writing. David Stark, if you would, forgot to mention not only saying your name, but your address would be helpful, just to make sure we've got it correct.
I'm David Stark, 318 West Manor Drive in Chesterfield. So, thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate it. I'm here also to talk about the health curriculum. And first I want to say, it's, my children are beyond the age of the health curriculum. But I would be remiss in saying, they both received absolutely outstanding educations here, absolutely outstanding. Thank you. This is a great school district. It's part of the reason I'm here. So, the piece of the health curriculum change that I'm just going to focus on is around gender identity. And I'm a scientist by training, my PhD is from Washington University, and I admit I didn't know a whole lot about gender identity. So I went and did some research and I am trained in looking at scientific papers, all that boring stuff, and analyzing the data and if the experiment was done right. And so I went out to inform myself. And the facts were hard to find. So some things we know. Now there's some rare chromosomal disorders, we're not going to talk about those, those aren't controversial. There is a, a state called gender dysphoria that some suffer from, it's still fortunately a minority. It's basically a state of distress, anxiety, confusion, when their gender identity doesn't match their biological identity. And that, you know, being depression and such, does have a diagnosis and such. Now the cause of that and the treatment, there is no consensus on. Now the one that's the hardest is gender fluidity, and I'm not even sure I can describe it right. I went to Facebook and I found earlier this year that you could choose from several of 58 different gender identities. And they changed that, now it's unlimited. Now one could put whatever description they want in Facebook that describes their identity. Some of these are non, gender nonconforming, cisgender, neither, and two-spirit people. I admit, I don't know what any of those mean. So I went to the American Psychological Society and it turns out, they don't know either. So they say there is no definition. The definition varies person to person. It changes through time. There's no consensus on what causes people to have these feelings. No one's denying the feelings. There's no consensus on treatment. There's not even consensus on, should it be treated? So then I thought, well, then what's the harm? And so I looked for experts, medical doctors, psychiatrists, that had opinions with some scientific basis on the harm. And I'm going to read a short statement from one in particular. He was a psychiatrist that studied gender identity for 40 years at Johns Hopkins. Okay, this is harsh, this is his opinion, but it's to bring up the possible harm. He said, "The idea that one's sex is fluid and a matter of open choice is doing much damage to families, adolescents, and children, and should be confronted as opinion without biological basis." That is harsh. As a scientist though, I don't know what we would put in a curriculum that's medically factual. Some experts say there could be harm. I urge us not to do that experiment with our kids in our schools until we know more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Alyssa Beach.
Good evening, Alyssa Beach. I'm in Chesterfield, I have a P.O. box. I prefer not to give the home address, but it's, thank you, thank you. Good evening, my name is Alyssa. P.O. box 771514, thank you. My husband and I have children in third and fifth grade at Clemon Elementary. I have been a participant on the Health and PE Advisory Committee since December. Thank you for taking the time to listen to both sides of the equation on this matter, as well as your service to our community by taking on your role as a scoreboard member. The amount of pressure you probably feel as you weigh the significance of your board decisions is probably beyond what any of us really realize. Thank you for stepping up. I'm a public health educator with advanced degrees in health promotion and physical education. I have had extensive experience working with federal, state, and local health organizations. I would like to make a few comments regarding my observations and experiences on this committee from a professional viewpoint. The many voices I represent feel the same way I do regarding the proposed health curriculum. We are concerned because we feel the process of developing new health and human sexuality curriculum has failed in the areas of communication, surveys, and committee guidance and facilitation. Our first concern is in the area of communication, for in the first meeting, input was clearly dismissed and answers to basic questions were vague and or not answered. Feelings expressed by many included that the meetings were a waste of time and decisions had already been made. The district has repeatedly given the impression that it has been attempting to implement substantial curriculum changes, but at the same time, keeping it under the radar. It's alarming to think that the advisory committee and surveys might be used only as the checkbox to be able to say they have had public input on the curriculum changes. Yet, we feel that this has happened. Secondly, the surveys. Several poorly constructed surveys were developed and disseminated to high school students, parents, and teachers. Survey length was often long, terms confusing and vague. Many times additional research was needed and had to be, the survey had to be interrupted before going back to answer into the survey questions. For example, most people probably think of gender roles and equity as being fair and impartial to both sexes, male and female. However, with a little more digging into the proposed curriculum and investigating the new terms that will be used, one quickly learns terms such as these have nothing to do with biological sex. When one reads the surveys and proposed curriculum at face value, they do not realize until further investigation what these terms are really referring to. I only realized it after reading it several times and asking some specific questions. Additionally, survey results were not used to guide curriculum. For several topic areas, respondents overwhelmingly disapproved of concepts being included at various grade levels, yet will be taught in the proposed curriculum. Our third concern relates to advisory committee's guidance and facilitation. Of the 1,600 respondents in the parent survey, results indicated 91% as being neutral, satisfied, or highly satisfied with the current curriculum. The question asked at each advisory committee and yet to be answered is, "Why is Parkway drastically changing the health and sexuality education curriculum when an overwhelmingly 91% of parents have stated they are okay with the current curriculum?"
We're at four minutes. We could wrap up right now, we appreciate it, I'm sorry.
Parkway's review of the curriculum is appropriate, given the length of time since it was last updated. However, Parkway has overreached its duty to educate our children by making substantial changes to the curriculum that are neither supported by parents or factual. Because of the failed process and lack of transparency, it is respectfully requested the Parkway School Board restart the curriculum development process with a facilitator who is independent and is unbiased. We as parents and you as our school representatives can do better.
Thank you, Ms. Beach, we need to move on to others.
I would like to submit written comments, written statements with my specific examples. Thank you for your time.
Carol Green. And if you could try to keep it to three minutes, we would really appreciate it.
My name is Carol Green, my address is 242 Penwood Court here in Chesterfield. I have three children in Parkway and I've attended the curriculum meetings. First, I applaud the district's desire to make their schools more comfortable for LGBTQ students. My heart aches for the individuals in this community who bear the painful scars that are a result of bullying. Change is urgently needed to create an environment that is safe for all students. Unfortunately, the use of gender identity theory in effort to accomplish this is extremely troubling. First, since this theory is not medically accurate, presentation of this ideology would result in indoctrination. Secondly, to instruct all students that they are part of a spectrum implies that they should determine where they fall on that continuum. This could cause a great deal of internal conflict, putting students at greater risk for misinterpreting feelings of same-sex attraction or gender identity confusion, which are in reality a very normal part of sexual development and in most cases will dissipate over time, if not otherwise reinforced. Also, in effort to solidify their identity, students may engage in sexual experimentation, which would increase the risk for emotional hurt and sexually transmitted diseases. Third, students may feel compelled to adopt a label they do not want. FreeToBeMe.com encourages young people to give themselves time. They state, "The fact that you feel an attraction doesn't force you to do anything. Telling someone that they must act in a way that is contrary to their beliefs is harmful." Moreover, this distracts from individuals from seeking help they truly need. Dr. Paul McHugh from John Hopkins said, "It is estimated that 90% of all trans individuals have other psychological disorders. Policymakers are doing no favors by treating their confusion as a rite, rather than a mental disorder that deserves understanding, treatment, and prevention." Furthermore, teaching students that hair or clothing styles are an expression of gender identity will give them a distorted view of our global world. Male followers of the Sikh religion never cut their hair. Traditional Scottish male attire is the kilt and African countries many girls shave their heads. In none of these cases are these individuals expressing a gender identity that's different from their sex. Furthermore, teaching students about gender roles perpetuates stereotypes and may make students feel they have to change their identity in order to enjoy the things they love. Because of gender identity, there is now a gross misunderstanding regarding the role of bathroom facilities. The purpose of designating separate bathrooms for girls and boys was simply to address the different functional needs of their physiology and to provide safe, dignified space in which to care for those needs. It was never meant to imply social exclusion. All students have the right to privacy while attending to their elimination. Asking students to share facilities with members of the opposite sex will create a tremendous amount of anxiety for students who wish to maintain modesty or for whom this may violate religious beliefs. Adoption of this ideology will marginalize those who disagree with this belief system, putting them at risk for harassment. Students should not have to face pressure from fellow classmates to adopt a political viewpoint. This would make schools and environment rife for intimidation. Therefore, the problem of bullying would not be eliminated. In your attempt to correct past wrongs, please do not create new pathways for hurt and prejudice. There is a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Butler.
Michelle Butler, 406 Andover Lane. Hi, I am a Parkway parent of three and I have been a member of the Health and PE Advisory Council since the very beginning. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about our concern with who the district is aligning itself regarding sexual health information and curriculum audit. Let me read the Missouri state law pertaining to sexuality education. "No school district shall provide abortion services or permit a person or entity to offer, sponsor, or furnish in any manner any course materials or instruction relating to human sexuality or sexually transmitted diseases to its students if such a person or entity is a provider of abortion services." Further, back on July 21st of 2014, at our Advisory Council meeting, Mr. Ramspot confirmed that Planned Parenthood is not allowed on campus, nor is any teacher allowed to suggest Planned Parenthood to a student. In your recent email to us, we were told that Teen Pregnancy and Prevention Partnership of Missouri will be one of the few organizations reviewing our proposed curriculum. On their website, you will find links to Planned Parenthood. For example, under the Teen Resource tab, there's a list of Planned Parenthood's St. Louis locations and links. If the intent of the law is to keep abortion providers from providing course materials or instruction, then why is Parkway allowing a curriculum that is influenced by an organization that endorses Planned Parenthood and giving them permission to audit the curriculum during the review process? Additionally, I'll point out to you that this organization, through their Facebook page, is actively promoting a student-led petition to support more inclusive sex education, which follows the national sex education standards. I will read the post from yesterday. Tomorrow, the Parkway School Board will hear comments on proposed changes to its relationship and sexual health curriculum to make it more comprehensive and inclusive. Teen Pregnancy and Prevention Partnership supports the district and its students in this effort. If you're in the district, the board's looking for feedback. You can attend the board meeting, email the board directly, or sign on to the Gay Straight Alliance's support petition. Teen Pregnancy and Prevention Partnership is supporting this agenda and is clearly a biased organization. For these reasons and because our community deserves a fair curriculum, I respectfully request using another organization during the sexual health curriculum review process that does not have ties with abortion providers and hold biased views. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie Blasini.
My comments are about three and a half minutes, so I'm aware. I have been, oh, my address is on Cypress Hill in Chesterfield. I have been a member of the Health and Physical Education Sexual Advisory Council for over a year now. I have actually seen the Safe Connections MythBusting, present LGBTQ MythBusting presentation. I am not associated with any community organizations or any LGBTQ clubs or groups. I have three children currently enrolled in Parkway, they are teenagers. I am also, during our first three meetings, Mr. Ramspot was clear there was going to be some changes to the curriculum. However, he was vague as to what direction. During our fourth meeting, the LGBTQ Mythbusters presentation by Safe Connection was shown as one of the changes to be made. I remember this presentation very well. Wolf, the presenter from Safe Connections began the presentation by asking the group, "How we get our gender?" There was awkward silence and I responded, being a scientist, "Are genes, are DNA?" He said, "No, it's a doctor assigns it when you're born and how wrong is that? Because the doctor doesn't know you." It was a very dramatic and sensational presentation, very engaging. Some of the statistics presented were more for effect, meaning they used percents of percents to make it look like a larger population. He talked about the different elements of gender and explained them very well. He used a gender-bred person diagram, which looks like a traditional gingerbread cookie, gingerbread man cookie. And it was what you look like, your gender expression, what you feel you really are inside, your gender identity, what you are attracted to, your sexual orientation, and what you want to present yourself as, your biological presentation. All of these elements were on spectrums and capable of being changed or chosen according to feelings. Everything was stated as fact and there was no real discussion. It was also clearly communicated that many people are ignorant in this area and they need to be educated about this. As he was presenting, he said something that stood out, that stood out to me. He talked how once you decide you are one of these gender spectrum things, you just don't go back. You don't go back to being straight. Afterwards, Mr. Ramspot openly praised Wolf for giving such a bold and well-stated presentation. He spoke how all students and faculty in Parkway should see this presentation. He loved the gender-bred person identity. I felt he had finally let us know the direction he wanted to take this curriculum and what he stood for. A question was asked following the presentation by one of the students, "What will happen when parents or families of students don't accept or believe the presentation?" Mr. Ramspot said, "There would need to be some reeducation of families." At the end of the evening, some of the teachers approached Wolf to ask how there can be more understanding, how they can be more understanding and supportive. The most notable and completely sincere suggestion was how using pronouns like he, she, her, and him are offensive and cruel to someone struggling. My concern as a sexually mature adult and parent of three teenagers is the impact this ideology will have. All of a sudden, a bad day, a mood swing, a hormonal, some lack of sleep misunderstanding, and it could possibly be the beginning of an anxiety over a gender identity crisis. Given the presentations, what is stated in there, there is no going back. If this is an extension of Parkway's desire to support homosexual rights, this ideology presented by the Safe Connections LGBTQ Mythbusters does not further the cause of homosexual rights. It is a morally subjective ideology, similar to putting a religion in schools and teaching all who do not believe are unenlightened and need reeducation. If Parkway's purpose in putting this presentation in is to prevent bullying, this intense focusing on oneself will not encourage students to turn outward. Instead, they will be turning towards others and to develop compassion and understanding. This ideology, and in particular this presentation's desires to change others around it to fit its beliefs. Instead of focusing on how we all have characteristics that make us feel isolated at times, economics, physical learning abilities.
That's four minutes.
By building bridges of these things that make us all feel isolated, we can build bridges of support and help students realize they have more in common. If the goal is truly to foster understanding and present why people believe what they do, perhaps a different venue that is outside the classroom can be used. For example, an LGBTQ club could host this presentation and invite anyone curious to attend. Another group with a different viewpoint could invite a different speaker to address how they believe and invite others to hear their points. These are much more appropriate venues for these presentations and discretion. Also, it doesn't put a teacher in a position to teach something they don't believe in and as a bonus, it alleviates Parkway from feeling they, appearing to favor one ideology over another. A sexual health curriculum should be the basic medical facts with emphasis on consequences and different choices. Anything else should be handled by trained professionals in a less public venue than a high school health class. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to have to ask you to limit yourself probably to two minutes going on, because we still have quite a few to get through and a lot of business to do tonight, and we do want to hear your comments. Kevin Cameron.
My name is Kevin Cameron, I live at 339 Navarro Drive. I partner, parent, and pastor within the boundaries of the Parkway School District. My wife and I consider ourselves incredibly fortunate to be raising our four children in the south area. Two at South High, one at Southwest Middle, and one at Sorento Elementary. We're a transracial family. I serve as a pastor with the good people at Parkway UCC, which is Parkway United Church of Christ on Ballast, just north of Clayton Road and just south of Missouri Baptist Hospital. We believe that no matter who you are or where you are in life's journey, you're welcome, no exceptions. Jesus never turned anyone away and neither do we. We believe in a God who is tender and strong, a God who loves tradition and new things. We understand God is inclusive and imaginative. We celebrate and sometimes scratch our heads as we learn more about science and matters of heart. Our kids are curious and confident and capable in this ever-changing world and we want to keep it that way. We're so pleased that the Health and Physical Department is revamping their curriculum as evidenced by the frameworks on healthy relationships and sexual health. Our family and our congregation strive to be relevant and engaged in today's world, which can mean learning about and talking about things that might be unknown or uncomfortable. Thank you to those who have worked on this curriculum project. I would encourage you to go even further in the direction of comprehensive sex education and move towards sharing medically accurate, developmentally appropriate information and dialogue with all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. TJ Cotton.
Hello, my name is TJ, I go to Parkway Central High. I've been in the Parkway District.
Could you state your address, please?
5077 Durant Avenue, I'm part of the DSEG program. I've been in Parkway, the Parkway District, my entire life, my schooling thing. I've passed all my health classes with flying colors, but that's mainly because the programs, they're all repeated over and over. I'm not learning anything different. Up until high school, my freshman year, when I joined the GSA, I didn't even know that there was something besides heterosexuality. I didn't know that there was different genders besides male and female and that caused me a lot of distress further down the line because I, as a student who identifies as gender nonconforming and LGBT, it caused me many problems when I was forced to be put into a box of a certain gender that I didn't identify with. And I see, I see students walking into school that also have this lack of knowledge, that don't know what LGBT even stands for, and they have issues. don't know what LGBT even stands for, and they have issues that they can't go to because the teachers aren't informed on it, they don't want to speak on it in class. There are kids that don't know that there is, there are kids that don't know that you can say no. There are kids that don't know that if you get pregnant, your life isn't over. There are kids that don't know that there's other things besides the basic human anatomy. And sometimes the teachers don't even want to speak, use the proper terms for the human anatomy. I, I signed the petition, which there are over 300 signatures, to support this because I don't like having that feeling that I have to try to match myself up with this curriculum when I don't identify with it, and I don't like having to see other students that don't identify with it have to work with it. And then they have to go out by themselves and try to educate themselves, and a lot of students won't do that. They'll just say, "Oh, I'm not, I don't feel like doing this." And students that, students that end up not paying attention in the classes, they end up getting pregnant, they end up getting STDs, they end up just ending up dropping out because they weren't educated properly, and it's just not good.
Thank you. Next, Barb Waite.
My address is 10 Summer Hill Lane, Chesterfield, 63017. I'm a Parkway parent and pleased to be so, three in the West area. I've also been on the committee for over a year with Ron and the rest of the, many people who've already spoken. I went in a year ago and spoke with the principal at West Middle about this issue. And when I first looked up the transgender gender identity issue, I looked it up under the American Academy of Pediatrics, which is the gold standard in pediatrics. And they classified it as a disorder very similar to body dysmorphia, which is like anorexia bulimia, seeing yourself as very thin when in fact you are not. They classified it as a mental disorder. In the past 12 months, they have changed their mind about that and reclassified it. The American Academy of Psychiatrics has not reclassified it. They still do consider it a mental, psychological disorder which needs treatment. And the thing that's the most staggering to me about this is that there's a 41% attempted suicide rate amongst the transgenders. According to the National Gay and Lesbian Task Force and National Center for Transgender Equality, 41% out of 6,400 respondents of transgenders said that they had attempted suicide. And I researched a little bit more. I thought, where did they get that? So, two institutions, Johns Hopkins has information on that. They were the first in the country to do the sex reassignment surgery. They have stopped doing the reassignment surgery because the suicide rates are as high after the surgery as they are before. But the real, the real research comes from Sweden. There, there, there isn't the research to render. This is so new, we can't see the statistics in this country. In Rockwood, in the rest of Missouri, it's not out there. But if you go to Sweden, and I will read this. "The gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender rights in Sweden has been regarded as some of the most progressive in Europe and in the world. Same-sex sexual activity was legalized in 1944, and it was declassified as a mental illness in 1979. It was the first country in the world to allow transsexuals to change their legal gender." They go on to say that discrimination as the basis for sexual orientation and gender identity and expression has been banned since 1987. And it is in Sweden that the suicide rate is two, attempted suicide rate is two out of every five transgenders. And their studies go back to 1972. And so I ask you to count the cost. What does it cost to put forth this curriculum? To students who are confused, who are, and it's very normal when you're in middle school to be questioning, but the statistics also bear out that 70 to 80% of those children who are confused in middle school will eventually work it out.
Sorry to interrupt you. It's about three and a half minutes. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. I just ask you to consider the cost.
Thank you. Samuel Waite.
Hello, I'm Samuel Waite. I go to Parkway West High School. I live at 10 Summer Hill Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. And I just want to say that this is a very difficult issue, first of all. You've got people on one side and people on the other. But what we really care about here is about the kids that are getting the education. What's best for them? Does it really matter that, different people are here, are definitely pushing different ideas? Some people support one, some support the other. But, like my mother just said, there are certain issues with one that the other does not have. I just really don't want the kids to go through with something that we're not quite sure about yet, that we can't be sure is safe for them. I don't care, I'm all for accepting, you know, LGBTQ people. I want them to be loved and accepted. But the thing is, I don't want people thinking that they are LGBTQ or even getting into this whole mindset in school because it could just throw them off for life. And once your life is gone, you can't get it back. Thanks.
Darlene, and I don't know how to say your last name, but it starts with an H. There we go. Just like a spell here.
Hello, I'm Darlene Hockerself, 2015 Forest Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63139. Thank you for allowing open comments. I'm a Parkway teacher. I teach at West Middle School, and I'd like to share some comments, please, regarding the health curriculum. I'm a science teacher, and I've had a chance to read over the Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health updates to the physical education curriculum frameworks, and I'm glad for many of the revisions. As a teacher, I'm glad to see a focus on safety and hygiene earlier in the curriculum. I'm also grateful to know that Parkway students will have access to education regarding LGBTQ issues, both in health and in better information on gender, especially specifically transgender health information, as well as the important topic of consent. We know from our social justice training that students do better when they see themselves mirrored in their schools. These LGBT concepts, LGBT concepts are essential to the mirror and window philosophy Parkway values in their community and in their curriculum. Our LGBT students not only have a chance to see themselves in the mirror through the new curriculum, but non-LGBT students have a window into information about their LGBTQ peers. Parkway LGBT students do not currently see themselves in the information in the curriculum. This omission is invalidating to the students, and absence of LGBT health information serves to erase LGBT students' identities as well as prevent them from accessing health information and developing on par with their non-LGBTQ peers. The absence of this information also contributes to a lack of information in the non-LGBTQ student, and a lack of knowledge and information contributes to a lack of understanding, which can manifest in unhealthy ways. The emphasis on safety and consent are also important. Students of all gender identifications need to feel empowered to say no to sexual activity if that is their wish. Students who understand consent will be more likely to respect healthy boundaries. This makes our students safer. Teaching about abstinence is not adequate if students do not feel properly empowered to define their physical boundaries. As a teacher in Parkway, I look forward to the increased knowledge positively impacting West Middle. I believe the training that the health teachers will receive will improve the knowledge of our faculty. Additionally, education on LGBT health and consent will increase knowledge in the student body and grow empathy. And I want to express my personal gratitude to the Parkway faculty and the members of the HPE Advisory Council who have done this work. Regardless of where you stand on the issues, I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabel Murin.
Hello, I am Isabel Murin, and I live on 608 Thunderbird Court. I am a Parkway Central graduate of 2014, and I discovered that in high school, I didn't learn any of this curriculum, and I really wish I would have. I joined a GSA club from my friend who asked me to be with her, to support her, and I found myself learning all these topics that I wish that I knew, and I wish that it would be included in our curriculum because it helped me understand myself, helped my sister, who was also a graduate of Parkway Central High School, 2013, who is also an honor student and a, and received a RISD award in 2013, understand that she is asexual and agender. And I believe that these topics are important to explain to students who are in, who do identify as LGBTQ and non-LGBTQ. It helps them be more aware of their surroundings in the world that we live in, that the world is not just filled with heterosexual people and cisgender people. When I attended Parkway Central, there were many students who were pansexual, gay, bisexual, lesbian, asexual, transgender, agender, gender neutral, and more. I am not talking about one or two students. I am talking about more than enough students to fill three classrooms. And it's important to, for students to understand that, that it is not just a small amount, but it is a lot of people that make up in the world that we live in. As for sexual violence and consent, those topics are extremely important. Again, a topic that parents would like to hide from their children. It's something that we do need to talk to students about. For example, I attend Merrimack here in Missouri, and there was an incident last year where a 20-year-old man who graduated from Parkway North stuck his hand down a girl's pants during school hours because he thought it was okay. And it's not okay. He did not receive consent from the girl, who is now sexually harassed. This may be seen as something that requires common sense, but many people forget to ask, "Is this okay?" Having no consent leads into things like sexual harassment, rape, and sexual violence. And I understand that sexual violence is a very scary topic. I understand that parents may say, "This will never happen to my kid." Unfortunately, it has happened to many children, many teenagers, and many young adults. It is an abusive act that happens in plenty of areas in the world. Teaching students this scary topic can help students prevent this from happening to them or anyone else in their life. I had spoke to some older parents about this board meeting. A 55-year-old stepdad responded with, "I remember when I learned sex education. My classroom was a bus, and my teacher was a 14-year-old friend. And now I want to ask this: Is this how you would like children to learn about these topics?" Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mary Smith.
I'll be submitting my comments and writing.
Thank you very much. Rob Roseman.
My name's Rob Roseman. I'm at 43 Hillbrook Drive. I have three kids at, in West, one at Middle and two at West High. Just want to make three points against the sexuality changes. And the points, my points and most of the others have been made at the advisory meetings, and I've attended most of those. Number one, I disagree with the underlying premise of the frameworks that's described on the first page, that the school must address the needs of the whole child. I'm sure everyone agrees that a physical, and I quote, "A student's physical, social, emotional development requires the same level of ongoing support as their academic development." But those are not the focus of a school. It is the parents, not the student, not the school's responsibility to ensure the development of the whole child, and with regard to sexuality, to teach the values and help them process outside influences. Many times, our family values may conflict with outside influences, including those presented in class as acceptable. Number two, a concern my own kids have had, and one that they've discussed among their own friends, is a difficult position that they will be forced into when certain topics are presented and discussed in, in class, such as lifestyle and gender choices. I know teachers are supposed to let us know when certain topics will be taught so that we can take our kids out of class, but by doing so, our kids may be seen as judgmental by the other kids that stay in class. Students may think of them as hateful when just the opposite is true, as our kids are considering how to love their neighbor even while they have conflicting morals. On the other hands, on the other hand, if our kids stay in class and remain silent, it may give the impression that they agree with all the lifestyle choices being discussed. And if they speak up against, will their opinions be acknowledged as equally valid? Personally, my kids would not be swayed by discussion of lifestyle choices, but we raise our kids to stand for what is good and right, and when necessary, speak out against which is wrong. And we do believe some of the lifestyle choices are wrong. Number three, the frameworks ensures that teachers are trained and certified to teach these topics, but according to the teacher survey taken by the frameworks developers, most teachers did not feel qualified to teach the topics. What then is the cost of the training, and is that in the current budget? And if not, what other educational programs may be cut? My feeling is that we should keep with the three Rs in the electives, that Parkway teaches so well, and not make mandatory sexuality education that is so subjective and clearly in the realm of the family to handle. I had one teacher say that his goal is to have every teacher leave class thinking that their lifestyle choice is best for them, but that's theoretically and practically impossible, as discussion will inevitably lead to conflicting views on those same lifestyles. To conclude, I don't trust the district or the frameworks contributors to determine what should be taught to children regarding sexuality, or what it calls healthful lifestyle choices. And for crying out loud, I don't want my school teaching my eighth-grade daughter about love or sexting, as is in the frameworks. So I request to not adopt the curriculum changes as mandatory for all students, and maybe consider them as an elective.
Joanne Waldman.
I live on Stablestone Drive in the district. I'm here, however, representing my child, Sterling Waldman, who has been involved in this process for many years. She says, "My name is Sterling Waldman. Members of the school board, if I was here in person, you might recognize me from attending every school board meeting except one my junior year. Anyone involved in the Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Curriculum Revisions meetings would also recognize me from attending every meeting. Many Parkway students involved in social justice would know me from the fight for sex ed that closer reflects the National Sexuality Education Standards. With the help of community members and other students, I ran a petition for Parkway to meet these standards my junior year. One other student and I presented our position to Dr. Marty and Dr. Watson, and then to the Superintendent's Advisory Council. Finally, I started working with Ron Ramspot at the revisions council meetings, which were open to the community. The community that came to these meetings were a majority of people who didn't have the same views as me. It was quite common for me to leave these meetings in tears. These parents argued and are still arguing that the curriculum doesn't need to change. No matter what the meeting was supposed to focus on, they consistently brought it back to not needing to talk about sexual orientation or gender identity in the curriculum. The words they used to say this erased me and my existence in the Parkway School District. Every time I got called a slur, every time one of my friends is attacked or harassed, every time one of my friends attempts suicide, it is because of, or worsened by, students and staff not understanding. Even basic definitions and allowing identities to be talked about in the classroom would lessen the terror current and future Parkway students have to deal with every day. The issue is so much larger than these parents can comprehend. I know because I tried to explain. One week, three of my friends, who are all current Parkway students, attempted suicide. I explained at the meeting that month how including gender into the curriculum could begin to ease this constant pain felt by the trans community in Parkway. The response in the meeting was that they didn't want their children exposed to that. Well, I am that, and one in 70 Parkway students is that. And one in 70 Parkway students is that. And if Parkway doesn't start working to take care of these students by exposing their peers to some extremely basic knowledge, then I would call that reckless and unsafe. I'm asking you on behalf of myself and every other trans student that has ever attended and will attend Parkway, to please pass these curriculum revisions and make sure health teachers get proper training on these issues from organizations like Missouri GSA Network or Metro Trans Umbrella Group as a way to show trans Parkway students that you do care about them and you do want them to be curious, capable, and confident learners."
Hello, I'm Richard Thurmond at 1737 Marsha. And there's, there's no doubt that children and adolescents are at times confused about different things. Gender identity can be one of them. It's not to downplay that its importance, that it be recognized and the children receive the attention and counseling that they need, but I have some information about gender identity issues that I want to share. Approximately 80 to 90 percent of gender-confused children and adolescents end up getting over this, this confusion as they reach tenor stage two of adulthood. I want also to share a statement from, a report, Gender Identity Issues in Children and Adolescents, from the American College of Pediatricians. And it states, "Recently, there's been a flurry of activity to address the gender-disordered patient. There are recommendations from some professionals to encourage the child's gender-atypical behavior inside and outside the home, i.e. school, and to create an environment of tolerance for different lifestyles by encouraging cross-dressing and teaching students from kindergarten upwards that human sexual orientation is just a continuum and maleness and femaleness are arbitrary endpoints. There are no studies to support this concept. The adolescent brain has been shown to mature progressively and not necessarily in the same fashion in all patients, thus allowing a pre-to-mid adolescent the option of making such irreversible life-changing decisions is a grave mistake." The, I'll give this to you. I sympathize with the feelings of individuals who are confused about gender, but my concern is for the curriculum and if it is in fact adopting unvetted opinions of groups as to what definitions are for gender and how they're determined. I think that is experimental and I don't think our students should be subjected to experimental ideas. More, they should be subject, they should be exposed to scientific fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Darrell Madai. I'm a pastor here in the area. I live at 1789 Shettler Valley Drive. And I don't have any written statements here and I'm not here to try and convince you about gender identity either here or behind me. I can speak to how awful it is to be bullied. I experienced that myself when I was in elementary school and I want to express nothing but respect and love for those who feel ostracized as a pastor, as another pastor said. The idea that God loves people and affirms them, He's created them in His own image. And that needs to be affirmed. And anybody who's being made fun of needs to be defended and advocated for as a person. But I also want to speak to the issue as a community leader, I guess, that as we move forward together, it's better if we actually do that. Can we find a way to affirm all people in their humanity and still respect where people are coming from, parents in particular? And if we can't figure out a way to do that, maybe we need to keep talking. Again, I don't know anybody here in this room, people are frustrated and mad and concerned, maybe fearful, and as a result, express themselves in strident ways. But I don't know anybody in this room personally who wants anybody to be made feel less than human. But they're also concerned for their own children and as they sort through the issues that they're going through at school, you know, sometimes my girls are here at Parkway Central Middle and sometimes just the stress of getting through the day of homework and getting to class on time is too much for their bandwidth. And we're putting them together, you know, that night. And some parents are concerned about the extra bandwidth. So I don't want to be political about this, but I want to encourage the board to think, how do we move forward together? And if we can't figure out a way to do it right now, then let's keep talking. I'm concerned about my third grader at Highcroft Elementary being, you know, discussing gender expression issues. He's nine years old. I'm like, why, why is that in the curriculum? There's lots of other things I've read and I know Ron personally, boy, he's, he has put a lot of work into this. And there's lots of awesome things in it, but there are still areas of concern. So as shepherds of our children and partners with us, I would encourage you to be patient with us and let's keep working together. If not, if there's a decision made, it may put a division in our community. Some parents may pull their kids out of class. I don't think that's really the solution we all want. So let's keep working for a solution we can all feel good about. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura DeLuca.
Hi, my name's Laura DeLuca. I live at 634 Princeton Gate Drive in Chesterfield. I am proud to say I'm Parkway graduate and my husband and I send all three of our children to Parkway. We're very proud of the education they have had so far. When I started hearing about this issue last year, I thought, of course Parkway will, you know, want to embrace all children and it's part of our mission statement of, you know, to all children. It doesn't matter if it's, you know, our own children or anybody else's children. Everybody is entitled to an education. And from what I'm hearing from a lot of parents that are speaking, I think it's more fear. I think our kids are really okay with all these changes. It's out there. It's an ever-changing world. Our two older kids, fifth and fourth grade, if I had them here tonight, they could tell you everything about gender identity because we've already talked about it and we have said it is, you know, you're going to be in school with kids who are different than you. That's okay. And that's great. And that's so, what I love about being at a Parkway school, a public school. It's why we chose, instead of sending them to a religious school, to be with, around all different religions, all different people. And I really, really encourage the board to go ahead with the proposed changes. Just wanted to keep it short and sweet, Chris, so there you have it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, I'm not making light of this last person. I can't tell what gender they are. But I do believe the last name is Weaver. Is that correct?
Yep.
There we go. All right. What's your first name?
Sue. Sue Weaver.
That's what it says here, okay.
I live at 417 Claymont Drive. I have three kids who are here at Parkway. One of them is a freshman. He's smart, he's funny, he's athletic. He's the kind of kid that everybody wants to fit in with. I have a daughter who's in eighth grade. She's pleasant, she's easygoing, she kind of fits in everywhere she goes. My youngest never fits in. She leaves school daily teased, harassed, embarrassed, questioning who her friends are and aren't. She's not lesbian, gay, gender, neutral. She's got dyslexia. She represents 15% of the population that has dyslexia. Parkway sees this as a medical diagnosis, does nothing for her reading. I'm spending thousands of dollars to bring her to another school to teach her to read. Parkway brushes this aside as a medical diagnosis. I just see that this is 15% of the population that's being completely dismissed. The lesbian, gay, gender population is 3% of the entire world, you know, the world population. This needs to be a conversation about priorities, not about my daughter's dyslexia. Parkway can't be everything to everyone. They need to have, refocus their priorities on reading, writing, and arithmetic. Some cultural psychosocial issues are better taught with the families. I've heard lots of people talking about what they talk about with their kids at home. That's where I think some of this education needs to take place. I'm a nurse. I have an extensive knowledge of anatomy and physiology. I know some of the curriculum that I'm seeing is not based on science. And so I just want to talk about perspective and refocus our priorities. I think that changes that are being proposed are kind of like bringing in the Coast Guard to rescue one kid that fell out of the pool. There's other ways that it could be handled. So I hope we don't, don't bring forth any major changes. Thank you.
We appreciate all the comments that have been made here tonight. Obviously, there are strong feelings on this issue and on the curriculum. We just want you to know, we appreciate the manner in which you presented it. You've given the board some interesting things to think about and I'm glad that we were able to have your comments here tonight. So thank you again and thank you for the manner in which you presented them to us. All 17 of you, I'm sorry, 19 of you. Thank you very much. Going back to our agenda 8.0, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, September 9th, 2015?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Resolutions, there are none. 10.0 Communications. 10.01 Calendar of Meetings. There is a tax rate hearing scheduled for Wednesday, September 30th, 2015, at 6:30 here at Central Middle School. Following the tax rate hearing, the regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM with an anticipated close session at 5:30 PM on that date. 10.02 Is our Board Liaison Report. Does anyone have any reports that they'd like to make? I attended a meeting this morning with some of our local political leaders, three mayors. I think Baldwin's mayor was not there, but, and several other leaders, so that they could become acquainted even more with the facility we call Spark. I don't know how many of you have been over there at the Chesterfield Mall. It's where we have our experiential learning, our, one of our strands of experiential learning and these are the ones who are there to pitch a business idea and see what they can learn about the real world before they even get in it. And it really is the real world for them. So it was nice to have these leaders in our community there with us so they could ask questions and understand some of the things we're doing in our district. Is there anything else?
That actually reminds me that I went to the Spark kind of kickoff orientation for all the various strands and it was a great turnout. It's really exciting when we're able to do things like that.
Yeah, it's a nice change in our school that we've been able to give to many students. Some of them are in the health science area, some of them are starting this year learning how to be teachers and there's even a coding one. So we've, we've seen some nice changes there and it gives these, give these students a real chance to look at what might be their career and what might it look like if they really were involved in it. And some of them really are just fantastic kids.
I thought it was interesting when I visited last month, the tech strand is new this year and I was talking with the teacher who he knew he was going to be challenged. It was week nine, week nine of school and but-
No, it was day nine.
Day nine of, day nine of school, but he was on day 40 of his lesson plan. So he was really having to move ahead. It was great.
Any other reports? You probably forgot a few things that you did. 10.03 Subcommittee Reports. There were none. Let me remind you of some of the upcoming subcommittee meetings that some of you on the board will have. The HR Finance Subcommittee Meeting will be on September 21st at 3:00 PM at the Administration Building. We will have Project Parkway Quarterly Meeting, September 21st at South High, beginning at 7:00 PM. And if you don't know who Gary Marks is, he's the one that understands the trends that are out there and what's happening. It'll be a fascinating night if you come and attend and are able to listen to him. It'll really be fantastic. And then the Student Services Subcommittee Meeting will be held on September 22nd at 3:15 PM at ISC. 11.0 Action Items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented here in the September 9th, 2015 Board Materials?
Some move.
Second.
Is there anything that should be pulled to action or close from this list? In that case, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? The motion carries six to zero. 12.0 Action Items. There are none policy review. There are no policies to review tonight. 14.0 or 14.01 Reports. We will call on Mr. Desi Kirschoffer, our Deputy Superintendent, to come down and give us a review of Project Parkway District Goals highlighting the work of 2015-16.
Mr. Jacob-
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kirschoffer actually has made a suggestion, to be respectful to the many people who came tonight, to trade his presentation with the work session that we're going to hold on. The work is being done by the health and diet group. So Mr. Kirschoffer is willing to make that switch in respect for the people who have stayed on and we think that would be a worthy switch.
You're the man. Then let's go ahead with 15.0, our Work Session. Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching Learning Accountability. Mr. Ron Ramspot, the Coordinator of Health PE Programs. We'll turn it over to you for now.
Good evening, President Jacobs, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. This evening, Mr. Ramspot and I, along with a couple of our fine teachers, are here to facilitate a work session related to the curriculum review process of the physical education and health curriculum. See if this works. Appears to be operator error.
Turn it on. Turn it on.
What a novel idea.
Mine doesn't have that.
We want to begin by thanking, thanking you for the Parkway School Board for providing us with clear direction through a well-defined mission that guides all the district work related to curriculum assessment and instruction. The mission requires us to focus on ensuring all students are successful. This one small word, "all," has set the bar high. To further guide district work, the Parkway Mission Statement is followed by 10 Vision Statements that outline indicators for success. All curriculum areas have a responsibility to work on achieving all vision statements. So with the work of Project Parkway, we have strived to not just have a mission and vision on paper. However, we are charged with ensuring that we evaluate our structures, systems, practices, and curriculum to ensure we achieve mission. At times, that may call us to do things differently. As part of our practice in Parkway, each curriculum goes through a curriculum and program evaluation every few years. Here is the history of the review of the health and PE curriculum. The health and PE curriculum was last audited and reviewed in the 2007-2008 school year with Board of Education adoption in January of 2008. In May of 2014, Mr. Ramspot began the- In May of 2014, Mr. Ramspot began the formal review cycle again. Over the past years, year, he has worked with teachers, administrators, students, families, community members, and local experts to review and propose revisions to the curriculum. While completing a curriculum review in any content in Parkway, our Parkway educators use many pieces of data and information. This may include, but is not limited to, community expectations, which is gathered through Project Parkway Advisory Committees and Work Teams, professionals and research from universities, research organizations, and educational organizations, program evaluations, which include surveys of students, families, teachers, and administrators, district standards, Missouri learning standards, and standards that are created by national educational organizations. In addition, we also study our local achievement data on assessments, and we always refer to our district policies. All of that information that you see in those small triangles on the slide are then filtered through the wonderful mission and vision that guides all of our work. While all content areas are responsible for all 10 of the Parkway Vision Statements that I mentioned, for the conversation this evening, I invite you to focus on three specific statements. We are successful, according to our Vision Statements, when all students are literate and critical consumers of information and ideas, when all students act out of a strong sense of personal, social, and civic responsibility, and when all students always seek to understand the views, values, and cultures of others. As we move forward in our conversation this evening, it is important to know that the health and physical education curriculum is expansive. It includes two main areas, health education and physical education. In October, we will present a consent item asking you to approve the whole curriculum framework. For our conversation this evening, though, we are going to narrow our focus to the health curriculum. Within the health curriculum, there are six strands: nutrition, safety, substance abuse, mental and emotional health, disease prevention, and growth and development in the elementary and healthy relationships in the secondary. Tonight, we're going to narrow even further than health curriculum, and we are going to focus on one small part, and that is the units of study related to growth and development and healthy relationships. At this time, Ron is going to help us understand more specifics related to that part of our curriculum.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Meredith. So what is the purpose of tonight's work session? My hope is that I can help summarize the work of the past year regarding the study of the sexual health curriculum. The summary will include the discussion of the proposed revisions to the Parkway Sexual Health Curriculum as presented in an addendum report to the Health and Physical Education Curriculum Framework, communicate the process that we followed in the redevelopment of this curriculum, share the feedback we received from community stakeholders, clarify the content and the intent of new topics, especially those that met with divided support, and any other questions that you may have, we'll entertain at the end. The purpose of updating the sexual health curriculum stemmed from the Health and PE Program Evaluation that was presented, as Dr. Meredith mentioned, to the Board in May 2014. As with any curriculum evaluation, a comparison of the Health and Physical Education Curriculum versus state and national standards was completed. In this case, the Health and PE curriculum was audited using the Missouri learning standards as well as the National Health Education Standards. This audit identified that the Parkway curriculum had some missing pieces. Most notably was the limited coverage of standards for sexuality education. Therefore, the sexual health curriculum was recommended for a more thorough study than its usual periodic tuning. During the process of this year-long study, we reached out to a broad audience to gather input from a variety of stakeholders who shared a variety of perspectives. In order to accomplish this, we first established a Sexual Health Advisory Council comprised of 90-plus participants overall, a large majority of them being parents. The Advisory Council met 10 times total between July 2014 and July 2015. This Advisory Council was charged with helping provide feedback from a student, teacher, parent, and community perspective, as well as to provide input in the development of the scope and sequence of learning outcomes. In addition, other guiding practices and documents were developed for the effective implementation of the sexual health curriculum. We also reached out to public health organizations that provided expert presenters, consultants, and resources for helping us in the development of a quality curriculum that was both age-appropriate and medically accurate. Many of these organizations had representatives that helped present sexual health information and served as active participants on our Advisory Council throughout. These organizations have been helpful in ensuring that the curriculum content is age-appropriate, medically accurate, and important to addressing the health needs of our youth. I also had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Marty's religious group leaders. I think I met with them three times in the past year. Not too many districts can actually provide an opportunity to meet with such a diverse group of religious leaders to discuss public curriculum decisions. All of these groups were supportive of the school's role for teaching sexuality education and felt it essential to the healthy development of our youth. Surveys were sent to parents, students, and teachers last fall to gather feedback from our Parkway community. These surveys were sent to all parents of Parkway students inviting their feedback regarding the existing sexual health curriculum. We received over 1,600 parent responses to the survey with a very favorable overall opinion of the content, but less favorable feelings of our support for them in their role in helping educate their child about sexual health topics. Finally, we delved into research trends and issues regarding healthy youth relationships and sexuality, as well as collecting guiding documents for developing effective sexual health curriculum and implementing best instructional practices. The recommendations for improvements to the sexual health curriculum come from all of the feedback and all of the hard work of the Health and PE Advisory Council, and all of the work from our teachers who spent days inviting all this feedback in, filtering it, and trying to develop a product that helped meet most of our needs. The changes that have been proposed help to strengthen an already informative sexual health curriculum that has served to meet many of our curricular goals and learning outcomes. The proposed revisions would help better define curriculum content, as well as update the health topics and conversations to be more relevant to current health trends, issues, and challenges, such as bullying and harassment via social media and texting, laws regarding sexual consent, I heard that mentioned a few times tonight, and navigating the informational networks for appropriate resources. If we are truly to accomplish our district mission of developing capable, curious, and confident learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world, we need to update the content to reflect the ever-changing world of 2015, not the world as parents grew up in, we as parents grew up in. There are unique health challenges that our youth face today that society has introduced to us, not the schools. Let's be very clear, this is about healthy youth and safe school communities. The intent is not to condone or promote certain behaviors, but to validate that they exist and understand how everyone can help in diminishing real threats to the health of our youth and communities. Our goal is to help students understand the world around them, as well as their fellow students, so that they can truly accomplish our vision statements and remain true to our commitment of valuing each child's uniqueness and supporting their health and well-being. Many of the concerns that were raised during stakeholder conversations referred to the need for better communication with parents and support of parents, as well as more support and development for teachers. We truly respect the role that parents and guardians play in instilling values and beliefs within their children and developing healthy attitudes. Health education programs are most effective when parents are involved. As these recommendations are presented, please keep in mind that health education is approximately 20% of the elementary and middle school health and PE curriculum, and sexual health lessons make up 15% to 20% of the health education curriculum. Are you doing the math? Therefore, sexual health is only 4% to 6% of the entire health and physical education curriculum in elementary and middle school, and 1/6 of the high school health curriculum because we have a health and wellness course. While a very important aspect of health education, unfortunately, it is relatively small portion of the curriculum. As we have to fit in with all of the other, as we have to fit in all of the other content, such as nutrition, physical fitness, and all of this other strands that Dr. Meredith had mentioned, we are doing our best with the minutes that have been allocated. Please keep in mind that the current Parkway Sexual Health Curriculum is best defined as an abstinence-based program, adopted as such when sexuality education frameworks were last adopted by the Board in June 1993. I might need some water. At that time, the Board of Education also voted against having an alternative, abstinence-only course option. While the sexual health curriculum framework had not undergone a major study in over 20 years, we have made minor tweaks throughout the years since the last program evaluation in 2008 through the tuning process. We made changes to curriculum language, lesson activities, and as well as some resources. Thank you. In our recent parent survey, which once again, we had 1,600 responses, thank you, our respondents identified overwhelmingly in favor of an abstinence-based sexuality education program. You can see the numbers and how they played out here. But there was also a large contingency of parents who supported the teaching of comprehensive sexual education standards. You will notice in the proposed revisions that we remain mostly in abstinence-based program as defined, but have addressed a few more standards that are inclusive in a comprehensive sexuality education program, such as the social, emotional, mental aspects of health behaviors. The Parkway Healthy Relationships and Sexual Health Policy, as it's referred to, identifies our commitment to teaching our students about healthy relationships and sexual health risk reduction, including the reduction of sexually transmitted diseases, teen pregnancy, and sexual violence. The policy also identifies the responsibility of the administration to develop and implement age-appropriate lessons and the parent right to request that their child not participate in any given presentation which they feel is not appropriate for their child. Our policy is directly aligned with the expectations of Missouri law for teaching sexuality education, with the exception of the new requirements of online safety and predators, which is now required as of August 2015. There are a limited number of lessons that are allocated for sexual health topics, so time is precious. Even in these presentations. However, there is a lot of redundancy in the curriculum and opportunities to cover more of the sexual health standards that have not been addressed over the many years. A more closely aligned and better articulated curriculum will allow new content that is both required by law and recommended by health professionals to be integrated into the health The initial work of redeveloping the sexual health curriculum began with the identification of student learning outcomes, which are included in the Sexual Health Frameworks Addendum, to guide the work of unit and lesson development. Sexual health learning outcomes were drafted by a team of Parkway HP, Health and PE teachers using curriculum-guiding documents, feedback from stakeholders, and input from public health organizations. A portion of the learning outcomes are content-based, covering a wide array of age-appropriate topics that are sorted into one of seven categories. That's the left column. The remaining learning outcomes are skills-based, identifying essential health and critical thinking skills, such as decision-making, goal-setting, analyzing influences, communication. The revisions add more rigor to learning experiences and health by challenging students to think critically about health information and not just accept all health information that they witness as factual or medically accurate. As Dr. Meredith mentioned, and one of our vision statement attests, we now, we know we are successful when students are literate and critical consumers of information. This is part of our mission. The first draft of these learning outcomes were presented to the Health and PE Advisory Council in May 2015 for their feedback and revised several times before the final version was presented in the Sexual Health Frameworks. The learning outcomes were tweaked based on feedback received a few times throughout the summer before being presented as a final draft in July 2015. The learning outcomes will provide guidance to the development of units and lessons in the sexual health area of the health education curriculum. So these were some of the results from a survey that we did after the first draft, which showed that 79% of the people who responded, which there were about 40 of our Health and PE Advisory Council members that responded, out of the 90-plus that had been involved. And we had a 79% satisfaction rating. 79% of the respondents were somewhat satisfied to very satisfied. With regards to middle school, we had a 75% satisfaction rating, and with high school, This was a good beginning, a vote of confidence. The learning outcomes were tweaked and revised three more times to clean up language and better clarify the true intention of the learning outcomes. Of course, these are still written in somewhat general terms, and content is more specifically identified in the unit and lesson details. A draft of the unit details has already been presented to you, and our Health and PE Advisory Council will have an opportunity to discuss these at our next meeting. Character traits are also embedded within each sexual health unit, which helps provide a foundation to healthful dispositions and attitudes necessary for making moral and ethical decisions regarding relationships and caring for sexual health. Students will be encouraged to analyze how health behaviors reflect their true character and how to weigh their decisions against personal and societal values. This slide is, provides a look at some of the added lessons that would become part of our sexual health curriculum at the identified grade levels. These lessons are in response to a need for healthful relationships and respect for all. One of the reasons we are doing this work session tonight is to help clarify the rationale and purpose behind the inclusion of lessons that include gender role, expression, and identity, as well as sexual orientation.
So as we heard from many of our speakers this evening, and as feedback we've received over the last couple of weeks, there are questions about why teach about gender identity and LGBTQ in Parkway? So why is that? First, let's be clear, society has introduced these terms to our children, not the schools. Just like any other topic that has health implications, the obligation of health educators is to provide the context for which to have age-appropriate, value-neutral conversations in a safe and respectful learning environment for all students. The health challenges faced by the transgender and gay population are concerning. There is research and data that many students who identify as transgender or gay are bullied and harassed in our schools and in our communities. Bullying and harassment of all kinds disproportionately impact gender norm, I'm sorry, disproportionately impact gender non-conforming transgender and gay students. Younger students who do not conform to traditional gender norms are more likely than others to say they are called names, made fun of, or bullied in school, and are less likely to feel safe. Nationally, students who identify as LGBTQ or transgender have higher rates of suicide attempts. We know that most every Parkway school has transgender students who beg for our understanding and our acceptance. and our acceptance. Research shows that sexual orientation and gender identity is not simply something that people choose, or a phase that they are going through, but something that is real that they are experiencing. By not recognizing this, we marginalize their feelings and make them susceptible to discrimination and harassment. While we continue to help teachers ensure a safe and supportive learning environment for all students, it is also our obligation to teach students to develop understanding and acceptance of all students. As with many topics in the health curriculum, learning experiences are designed to present health issues that not only personally affect a portion of the population, for example, HIV and AIDS and drug use, but have an impact and can be addressed by the community as a whole. The proposed revisions are not about teachers taking sides or advocating for a particular lifestyle or a gender identity. It's quite the opposite. It is about helping all students be successful in school by helping them understand and be respectful of their actual or perceived differences. Our schools are a microcosm of society, and we have a responsibility to help them learn how to navigate that reality in order for them all to be successful in school and in life. The Sexual Health Advisory Group agreed upon respect for all as a non-negotiable when developing learning outcomes. So I offer you this question. How do we show respect for all? Respect begins with developing the knowledge and skills to better understand what underlies all of our personalities, feelings, and beliefs. We must first seek to understand others before we can develop respect for others. On a practical level, respect includes taking someone's feelings, needs, thoughts, ideas, wishes, and preferences into consideration. If we believe this to be true, the outcome of teaching about gender roles, expression, and identity in the classroom will help transgender and gender norm, non-conforming students to feel more comfortable in school and develop positive self-esteem. In addition, it helps all students to be more knowledgeable, understanding, and empathetic. It serves all of us in creating a more humane school district and a greater community which tightly aligns with the Parkway vision statements that I shared earlier. Survey data of Parkway parents and students indicate we have support in teaching gender topics in our curriculum. We received the same type of feedback during student focus group conversations, as well as in conversations with health professionals and organizations. Of particular interest was teachers identifying that transgender and sexual orientation are high-interest topics that our students want to discuss in today's health classrooms as they try to understand their peers. The bottom line is, there are no good reasons, there, rephrase that, the bottom line is, there are good reasons to include lessons about gender identity and LGBTQ in our health classrooms. There is enough students and members of our community who have requested it. Public health agencies and experts have recommended it. There is an identified issue of the marginalization and discrimination against transgender and gay people that pose health risks, and it supports the Parkway mission. Now Ron is going to provide you with some more specifics of what the gender role and identity lessons would actually entail at the various levels of school.
The next few slides attempt to provide the true content of this part of the sexual health curriculum. Let me be clear, this is not a curriculum that encourages students to consider whether they may be transgender or gay, as it has been characterized, but is a five-lesson, age-appropriate sequence on gender and diversity with the goal of developing understanding and sensitivity toward the population of students in our classrooms, to a, towards a portion of our population of students in our classrooms and in our community who identify as transgender or gay. We have received recommendations from the public health and sexual health organizations regarding age-appropriate and evidence-based lessons that would include these three, or these lesson topics. The goals we hope to achieve with lessons about gender roles and diversity are trifled. Develop an awareness and respect for individual identity as it relates to social expectations of gender roles and behaviors. Our second goal is to increase awareness of assumptions and stereotypes around gender roles and behaviors. And our third goal is to develop skills that support others in the face of bias, of name-calling related to gender identity and expression. So this is a look at a third-grade lesson and the objectives of that lesson. Please keep in mind that we have not fully developed these lessons due to waiting on approval to move forward with these curriculum additions. So you can see here we have four objectives. This is, this lesson, students will learn that roles are like rules by which we play games. The role of student involves being a good listener, right? Coming to class on time, doing your homework. Students who follow the rules do well at the game. Gender roles are the rules people think they should follow because of their sex. Ways they act because boys and men are supposed to, or girls and women ought to. Students brainstorm gender-specific roles and behaviors that they have encountered or witnessed. Students will explore how different cultures and societies have different beliefs regarding gender roles. In seventh and eighth grade, we have identified a lesson that helps students learn about how to be respectful and accepting to people who are gender non-conforming or transgender, exploring how stereotypes about gender roles and expression can be hurtful. The learning objectives would include recognizing that adolescence is a time of personal growth and expression, identifying ways to be respectful and accepting of people who are gender non-conforming or who have identified themselves as a non-traditional gender or sexual identity, explore how stereotypes about gender roles and expression can be hurtful and affect relationships. And then in eighth grade, basically teachers, basically this lesson teaches students about gender identity and sexual orientation. It is in eighth grade that we would introduce the term transgender. We also identify the health risks of those around them. So the learning objectives are to understand the difference between gender identity and sexual orientation, compare and contrast heterosexuality and homosexuality with regards to health risk behaviors, identify the dangers that transgender people face with unnecessary acts of prejudice and discrimination, and how to respond to these acts when you or someone you know experiences this. So that was a look at three of the five lessons in that sequence. Parkway is committed to providing quality teaching in all curricular areas by implementing effective instructional practices. We have and will continue to practice sound professional judgment in the planning and teaching of sexual health. We are obligated to uphold Missouri law and Parkway policy, as well as implementing practices that exemplify high-quality instruction. These are some of the examples of the structures that we will be putting in place, and some of them already are in place, to remain true to our commitments for a quality sexual health curriculum. So one of the ways that we measure age-appropriateness is through an audit of our content versus standards, state standards and national standards. And with regards to medical accuracy, we send our curriculum to the Missouri Department of Health for an audit of medically and factual, medically accurate information. Our next steps include the continuation of our Health and PE Advisory Council meetings. Sorry, folks, you're not done. With the next one taking place on September 29th, the Health and PE Curriculum Frameworks, which includes the Sexual Health Curriculum Addendum, will be considered for adoption on October 21st. Professional development for teachers will be taking place this fall. Either way, that will help, will help purpose, will help in improving the delivery of the sexual health curriculum through the development of instructional practices and content competency. Parent resources and communication tools are being developed at this point and in the coming months. Finally, we will be planning a parent meeting in January, which we haven't done for a while, but we have done in the past, to allow parents to learn about the sexual health curriculum. And parent education sessions will be included pertaining to sexual health. And now I'd like to just open it up to questions that you might have.
Anyone on the board have some questions they'd like to ask Lisa, or Ron, or?
Would you mind flipping back to one of your other slides before we get into some other questions? It's the one on teaching.
I'm sorry, I can't even hear her. So I don't know if we can turn that volume up a little bit? Thank you.
The teaching about gender feedback slide. This one. Could you, could you go through that one one more time in a little bit more detail?
Sure. So this was part of the survey that we did with the 1,600 parents, and we asked them to identify appropriate topics at different grade levels. So it wasn't grouped like elementary or middle school, it was each grade level. And it was, there was a comment made about the, the extensively of the surveys. We wanted to gather as much feedback as we could, and I thought this was very good feedback to identify where parents felt like appropriate conversations should be taking place. And so some of the, some of the topics included were the gender roles and equity, as well as sexual identity and orientation. So 40% of the parents felt like this was an appropriate place for a conversation about gender roles and equity at the elementary level, and it was more like the third, fourth, and fifth grade levels.
And Ron, if I remember correctly, Ron, that question was where they could mark multiple answers, that it could be at elementary and middle, so they didn't have to pick one or the other. Does that make sense?
And I'm recalling, I think in the parent survey, because I did it, they asked for you to answer the questions in terms of one or the other student. Was that correct? Like you had to think about this in terms of your older, your younger student?
It may not have been on these set of questions.
No.
There were questions like that, but I don't think this one was.
This one wasn't one of them.
Correct. And this one, they could basically check as many different levels as they'd like. So, I mean, they could pick and choose just one, and they could also respond that they wish that, that they prefer that this topic not be discussed. That was one of the options.
If you remember back to one of the early slides, whenever we talked about all the things that are considered whenever we develop the curriculum, this is a key part, is listening to our community. But we also lay that next to the Missouri standards, the Missouri law, the standards that come out of our national, our national education organizations. But the surveys is something that Ron and his team spent a lot of time trying to gain an understanding of what our community wanted and thought was best. But again, we lay that next to all of those other pieces of information as well.
Could you, would you, on one of the items with the timeline that we had received in our packet, it showed that teacher, let's see, this is, Sexual Health Teacher Training Workshops would take place in the summer of 2016, yet you're wanting, we're wanting to implement this in the spring of next semester. So how, can you, can you talk about?
Sure.
That issue?
Sure.
And then when you're talking about that, I'm also curious as to teacher training, who's going to do the training, who's going to get trained?
So in response to your first question regarding the summer development in 2016, that is one of the developments that is planned for the year-long, for a year-long plan, okay? We also have training that will be taking place this fall. So that, we, we offer training every summer for our teachers. And it is optional because it's in the summer, but we bring in groups, St. Louis County Department of Health, some of the same groups that were, have been involved in our work, BJC Healthcare, Teen Pregnancy Prevention Partnership, I think I got that right. And so development is ongoing. So that's just one offering during the summer that we provide, but that is not guaranteed. The guaranteed development will take place in the fall, where all of our teachers who teach health education, including nurses that are asked to step in and assist with sexual health lessons, and counselors, and believe it or not, classroom teachers are certified to teach health education. So anyone who is certified and asked to assist with teaching sexual health education will be invited to those trainings. And there was one more question. I think who all would be invited, I think might have been the last one.
So the other, the other question that I have is to do with the materials that is going to be selected, the textbooks and the materials. I think trying to get our arms around this without knowing and seeing the materials, the textbooks, videos, if there's going to be videos, what, how, what is going to be that process for coming up with the materials that are going to be used to teach the lessons?
So Ron mentioned that his advisory work will continue, and that will be part of the continuing work of the advisory, is with communication with families, because one of the things we heard in program evaluation is that we need to do a better job of communicating with families. And Ron and his teachers have already been working on that. They, the advisory will also give input into resources, so Ron will bring resources for them to preview, preview along with teachers and give feedback on them. One of the things, and it does feel a little awkward, and the reason I wanted to talk about this, is we used to, in years past, whenever we adopted curriculum frameworks, is we would say, okay, it's time for math to go through curriculum evaluation, let's look at textbooks and, and then select which textbook we want, and now we'll write our curriculum to match that. And so now we're doing it more where we write our curriculum. What is it that we want our students to know and be able to do? What do we want them to understand? And once we get the curriculum written and approved by the Board of Education, then we audit resources against that curriculum. If we would select resources now and were asked to make changes, then we would have resources that we've already purchased that may not align to our standards. So the process is, we get approval from you on the curriculum framework, and then we bring in vendors and different resources, and we audit it next to our standards and find the ones, or the compilation of resources that best match. And as you know, that's what we're in the process of doing with math. You approved the math curriculum last early winter, spring, and elementary, it was in winter, and then elementary did the pilot of their resources and found it didn't match our standards, so we delayed adoption of resources, but we're still teaching the curriculum with local resources. So that will be part of the work that Ron and his committee will do, is once we get approval, and, so we're going to be a little bit tight to do that, but we do have some resources that we've already, that we have already been using that align with the other parts of our curriculum that did not have changes to it. So we'll be looking for things immediately for the areas where there are changes. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, Ron?
Yeah.
Ladies first.
So what happens now? Let's say tomorrow, we have a health class in high school, and a student asks a question about a gender identity issue or a homosexuality issue. What hap, how does a teacher handle it now, and how will it be different after the adoption of this curriculum? of this curriculum?
These questions are currently coming up in our classrooms. There's no denying it, when we teach about healthy relationships or sexual health, those who are curious and want to know. And, so the teachers sometimes avoid the question if they're not, if they don't feel competent in responding. Sometimes they will have like a question box, and so the kids will put the question in the question box, they will go find the, an answer from a legitimate resource and a professional to be able to respond, maybe the next class. But it is kind of challenging when the, this isn't written in the curriculum. You have the, you have the written curriculum, you have the taught curriculum, and as much as we want to align those two perfectly, there are questions about current trends, issues, things that our students see on TV and read about that they want to know more about, they want to understand. And it would be a shame if we, because it's not in our curriculum, to, to avoid those conversations. So what would happen if we do move forward and we include these lessons in our curriculum? It will give our teachers confidence in, and direction, and training to respond appropriately, to remain value neutral in those conversations, just like here tonight, to listen to the many perspectives that are in our, in our community, and to then think critically about it and compare it to their, their own personal values and beliefs, as well as societal's values and beliefs.
Question for you, some called into question the value neutrality of some of the organizations that are doing audits, like TPP, who does a great job when it comes to helping people understand how to prevent pregnancy and avoid those kind of responsibilities that they may not be thinking about. But were they really the ones to look at the age appropriateness of some of the other things that we might be teaching in our curriculum? Same thing with Safe Connections, they were called into question. Are you going to look at some other agencies that perhaps are more neutral, that parents can look at them and say, okay, we're, we're getting, we're not getting an unfair, we're getting a fair look at this?
Sure. That will be certainly important for us to measure the purpose and the message and the content that is brought into our classrooms from an external service provider, that will have to have clear guidelines for, not only for when we screen the material, but so that the presenters themselves know that this is some, a topic that is appropriate to the Parkway curriculum. And then this part of our presentation may not be, is not there. So we might have to modify our presentation to match with the expectations of our curriculum in Parkway School District. So, you know, in response to organizations that, you know, tonight there was mention of, of an organization that had membership and representation from Planned Parenthood on their committee. Many of these organizations have large memberships with a wide variety of experts in, in this case, sexual health. So that's to be expected, because they, this is something that these professionals study. It's their job, and so they invite everybody in with the different perspectives. But there are, so, there are numerous organizations that aren't excluded by Missouri to be included in conversations about sexual health curriculum and development.
Chris, with that, our, our recommended learning outcomes are aligned with multiple sets of standards that are proposed by educational professionals. And Ron, I'd like for you to talk a little bit about who's involved in creating the standards that come out of the state of Missouri, or the standards that come out of the national professional organizations in education, because that is also a barometer for us. If we're aligned to those, that's an indicator that we are age appropriate. So talk a little bit about who sits on those committees at the national level.
Well, at the national level, just every major medical group, psychiatric group, psychology, psychological group, those organizations are represented. At the state level, we have health experts, health education experts from throughout the state, who sit on committees and are directed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and develop grade level expectations. Our standards, our national standards, health education curriculum, the health education standards are developed by the Centers for Disease Control, I would believe a very legitimate health organization. These groups, who once again are comprised of many professionals that include just about every medical and health organization you might know of, are included in deciding what is age appropriate content per grade level, sometimes per grade cluster. So they might do K through 2, 3 through 5. But, so that helps guide our thinking. Doesn't mean that we necessarily have to adopt that thinking, but it helps guide our decisions about whether this is something that is deemed by professionals and experts as age appropriate.
Been in Missouri long enough that I'm a little bit suspect of Washington.
So I do think it's important for us to remember whenever we refer to national standards, they're not national, they're not standards that come out of our government, they're standards that come out of national educational organizations. So they're not, so this, these are standards, just like the International Reading Association, which is comprised of reading experts from around the country, not legislators, create recommended standards. So whenever Ron's referring to national standards, in this case, he's referring to the standards that are by the National Organization of Health and PE Educators, not our legislators.
One of the great comments tonight was regardless, we need to keep moving together forward. And there's so much good in this curriculum, I would hate to think that if we didn't get to agreement on one part of it, that we threw the baby out with the bathwater. So, I don't know where this will end up, but I would certainly hope that we would move forward with the things like, we're talking about sexual consent. I mean, that just has to be something that young men understand, that no means no, and maybe vice versa, but certainly for the female. And some of the other things that are being taught there about nutrition. I mean, there's just so much good that is in this, but I'm not sure that we're at a point where we understand what we're presenting to them. I, for one, like in third grade, when I see that the understanding and respecting various gender expressions and roles, I don't know what that looks like in the classroom, so I'm a little nervous to approve it and say, well, yeah, move right ahead. I need to see more, what's that, what are kids going to be taught in the third grade? Like one parent talked about his ninth grader, or his nine-year-old. I feel a little more comfortable with some of the older kids, but grade school just makes me nervous.
And to that point also, that tags on to something I wanted, right here, 40%, only 40% of the parents are in agreement that gender role and equity should be discussed in elementary-level schools. So how do we go from 40% of the parents, which is less than half of our parents thinking it should be taught, and then it going ahead and being added into the curriculum?
So this survey was done at the very beginning, and then as Ron and his committee worked, then you saw the second survey that had the bracket, or the second survey that had the brackets of the approval of the grade levels where we ended up putting things. And part of that was because through the work, more clarity came, and I do agree, when we hear gender roles and equity, we bring our adult mental models based on our adult experiences, and we define those words. And so Ron has some resources that he's looking at, that he will present to his advisory to be considered to be resources. And one of them, the example for the third grades, second or third grade gender roles, it was a scenario where the students listened to a story about a family, and after the students identify, well, in, in my household, mom cooks, or in my household, grandma cooks, or in my household, you know, so the, the stereotypic gender role that the women cook, in this particular scenario, mom's a doctor and works night, and dad cooks dinner and puts the child to bed. And so then there's conversation about, well, men can cook as well, you know, that's not, and so whenever we look at that, that's what gender role and identity is in the elementary grades. And so we could provide some resources, we're hesitant to say, this is the resource, because we don't know, but we could provide what those would look like in a variety of resources, if that would be helpful. But I do agree that clarity could help with that, because we do bring our adult experiences to help us define those words, and they may be a little skewed compared to what it actually is in the curriculum.
I like that, and I think that would be very, very helpful and put a lot of minds at ease. Would you agree, though, that it kind of lessens our, you know, it makes us look more like we're advocates when we are saying that certain organizations are looking at our curriculum and providing a, an analysis of it? The one from TPP seemed pretty high level, I would like to have seen them say more about individual frameworks. But if they're associated with certain groups out there, then it makes it almost sound like, well, Parkway's for Planned Parenthood too, then?
It could be perceived until you see the long list of people who have been involved in that work.
Okay.
And if I could provide just an example of a, of a story, I was, when we talk about gender roles in third grade, it seems early, doesn't it? I was in a kindergarten PE class, and just observing, I like to observe the students, right, and what they do, how they respond to instruction, but how they interact with each other. And there was a child sitting in front of me, a couple of children. One obviously was a boy, and one, I wasn't exactly sure if it was a boy or a girl. But the whole class knew the child to be a girl. And she was wearing a vest and a bow tie and had a short haircut. And the child next to her said, girls don't wear bow ties, why are you wearing a vest? Why is your haircut so short? And so I stepped in, intervened, and just tried to, you know, ease that conversation and try to help him make sense of what he was saying. And those are the conversations that I feel like we need to allow kids to have conversations so that they understand, develop an awareness, and they are not discriminatory, they don't marginalize students. And this is what, this is all about. It's about developing healthy kids, and part of developing healthy kids is helping them feel safe, respected, and that in itself will help them be healthy. But having a community that feels that same way, that is open and accepting, helps the health of our entire community.
Any other questions?
We've talked a lot about curriculum, and we know there will be a curriculum. We see the framework right here with the many objectives and content curriculum items. But we all know that good teaching basically starts with a curriculum, but what happens next is how to teach the concept, the curriculum that we're expecting to have taught, and the outcomes achieved. So in the training of teachers, there we see the frameworks, the content, et cetera, but how will we help teachers to teach, teach it? Because teachers are individuals, and a lot of our curriculum is such that, here's a concept, you figure out how to teach it. You're a teacher, you're trained to be a teacher, you know how to teach, so teach the concept. I think some of these issues we're talking about are a little different from the standpoint that I think teachers need more in terms of instructional strategies and resources and approaches to how to teach these, these curriculum content items. And I'm just wondering, you know, what kind of training will teachers have to that degree?
And Debbie, Debra, Ms. Hopper, that was the question that I did not address, that you had as well. So my, my simple answer to that is thorough training, including content competency, but how to facilitate conversations in a value-neutral way. It's not easy. Sometimes you have to, you know, bite your lip, right? And before you say what you, you were going to initially say, and then you think about, okay, I've, I've received this training, I have to remain neutral here, I need to allow for multiple perspectives to be heard, and then I need to provide an opportunity for children, our students, to make sense of that. So we are going to just provide better training than we've ever provided before, with the help of multiple organizations who are experts in these areas that we need our teachers to be experts in. So it's going to take not just one day to accomplish that, though it will be continual development, and we will survey our teachers about what areas they feel like they need to be more competent with, and go from there. And I know we have a teacher in the audience, I don't know if he has anything that he wants to add to that.
We need to train more than teachers. We need to train our counselors and our nurses and our principals and other staff members to deal with these issues too. Because you don't know what's going to come out of the classroom and where a kid, a kid might go to try to get some answers. And we, they have to be prepared, I think. Whether it's go home and talk to your parents, or whatever the answer is.
I certainly agree with that, and that will be part of the training. And I think, you know, as we look at training, there's a couple of other structures in place in Parkway that help support that. So our Professional Learning Community Initiative is our number-one professional development structure. And so as our health teachers work in their collaborative learning teams or multiple school PLCs, that is a place where they can provide support for each other. And as they're working on this unit and unpacking the standards and deciding instructional practices that they'll use in the classroom, that will be a place where they often, CLTs will often invite outside people in to help them with that, be it a curriculum coordinator or somebody from a university, in this case, it could be Ron, or it could be one of the agencies, to preview lessons. I also think whenever, you know, I spoke tonight about our mission and our vision, you guys also, whenever you approved that, approved learning principles that we need to embrace in every classroom. And so we will look at, how do we apply those learning principles within that? And then I do think, Sam, you make a point, in our curriculum, we, you know, we talk in educationese, but stage one is what we want our students to know, be able to do and understand. And that's agreed upon at the district level, and it's consistent across the board. Stage two is our assessments, how will we know our students understand? And some of that is consistent across the board, but a lot of that, the teachers design in their CLTs or in their classrooms to monitor how students are progressing. Stage three is where teachers love to design, that's where you're talking about, Sam, where they come in and they bring their art and craft to engaging students in a learning environment. And you're right, that often we provide resources, we provide sample anchor lessons that are exemplars. And Ron and I have talked, this might be a place for our teachers to feel more comfortable as the teachers who might not yet feel comfortable, which we did see in our survey, that we might have tighter recommendations on resources and vetting, not to where we would say, this lesson, this lesson, this lesson, because teachers know the students in their classroom. And they may even do something slightly different first period than second period based on the students in that classroom. But we might have a broader range of vetted resources that are tightly aligned to the commitments that are outlined in the framework. Because I do think this is a place where we could provide more structure and more support to ensure a safe environment. I also think in the development, this will be a place, one of the things we often do in development is we run scenarios of if a child says this in class, or a child makes this error on this math problem, or a child has this misconception whenever they're making inferences about characters, how do you respond? What's your, what's your conferring response or your teaching? I would see this would be a very good place for our development to include those types of scenarios. So a student brings up such topic, how do you structure a classroom conversation in a value-neutral way where all students feel comfortable talking and sharing and reflecting if they're ready? And this is a place, I feel like I'm giving lots of examples here, you've also given us the support to really study engagement strategies with our CAGN work. This will be a place where we might need to think about that, because all students may not be ready to talk in class, and if we force it with those structures, then that's not safe for everybody either. So this might be a place where we use some different strategies than those. That, that provides a neutral place where everybody can talk, but if they're not ready to talk in this content, because they're still trying to make sense, or they want to talk at home, which is the first place where this should, content should be, the students should be exposed and having those conversations, then we want them to have that ability. So it will be a little different than other content areas.
As far as the audit done by the Missouri Department of Health? As far as the audit done by the Missouri Department of Health, what information were they given in order to be able to make that kind of assessment or audit?
The most current information we have, the most detailed information we have, which includes the student learning outcomes as well as the unit detail for all of our sexual health curriculum. So for, in our, on the online curriculum, we have course details, unit details, and then we have lessons. Those unit details were provided for, to the Missouri Department of Health Education for them to measure against-
Do you know offhand what they, I mean, do they look at age appropriateness or-
They mainly look at the medical-
Do they make sure that it complies with the state law and stuff like that?
They mainly look at the medical accuracy of the information.
Okay.
And that, that document or that process has already, is already underway and we're hoping to get those results back here before the September 29th meeting with the Health and PE Advisory Council.
Okay.
I've noticed that our curriculum goes from eighth grade to 10th grade. So can you explain what happens with health, PE, sex ed in grades nine, 11, and 12?
There are two courses or two half credits required for physical education in high school. And that is not only requirement for Parkway School District, but for the requirement of the state of Missouri. So that those two courses constitute the full credit requirement for physical education and then there's a half a credit requirement, one semester course for health education. A while back, they tried to sequence the physical education and health education so students weren't taking two physical education courses in one particular semester or even one particular year and then not able to fit in their math and science and ELA, social studies. So they, they tried to identify a, a sequence which not 100% of our students follow. They're helped by counselors and trying to, how they fit in physical education courses and health education courses in their schedule. So in ninth grade, we have a required fitness concepts course and that's a PE, that's the first half credit that our students receive for physical education. In their sophomore year, we encourage them to take the health and wellness course. So that's the 10th grade health education that they receive. And then the other half, remaining half credit for physical education, they can take any time in between 10th and 12th grade.
Does it seem like there's something lacking there? I mean, that doesn't seem like much when we're talking about trying to make a more comprehensive education in this regard, that we're missing three grades in high school of teaching and at, at critical stages, ninth grade.
So as we know, there are lots of opportunities for students in high school and they have their requirements and then the electives. And so there's the one half credit that is the required for health education. But there are other courses where bullying and harassment are, and bullying, harassment, acceptance, understanding views, values, and cultures of others are embedded within the curriculum. So in our literature classes, whenever we read novels or other pieces of literature for people who don't, who aren't like us or who are like us, it encourages us to have those conversations as well. Whenever we look at some of our child and family development classes and our CTE strands, some of them, if, if students are taking a personal interest in that route, there are also opportunities for conversations that are similar, not exactly the same, but similar to this. So the idea of inclusion and respecting all and understanding views, values, cultures of others being literate and critical consumer of information and ideas, those happen in all, all classes. This is just where it is specifically guaranteed.
Do you have any requirements to have and a lot of them are mandated what subjects? So there's not a lot of elective-
In our health and physical education program evaluation, which included a student survey, I'm talking about the overall health and PE program evaluation, there was a question asked about interest in additional health and PE courses. And there is interest in additional health courses. I think some of that is addressed by career and technical education, which has a child development course. But certainly there is an interest, there's actually been interest in having an entire health course be about sexuality education.
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Okay.
So why are we rushing, and I feel a little bit like this is being rushed, to make a decision to start implementing this in the spring? What would happen if it were some ongoing dialogue, we get the reviews back, maybe we like the reviews, maybe we don't, maybe there needs to be some tweaking, teachers aren't ready to start teaching yet? What, what's, what's the risk of waiting until the next August to start teaching this curriculum? So that we can be more thorough and dedicated or-
I think that'd be a good question. There's a response that we used to have as health educators, I think that'd be a good question for your parents, right? And so my response to that would be, I think that'd be a good question for our students to answer. The stories that were shared tonight, I don't think we can wait another day to help our students see themselves in the curriculum, to help them feel safe at schools. We're talking five lessons, five lessons that really aren't very aggressive with these topics. They're very age appropriate. And I, and I remember teaching these same concepts and, and lessons in Rockwood when I was in Rockwood School District, which is a little bit more conservative of a district. And so we could wait, we could wait. But if we feel enough confidence in that these aren't too extreme, that these are appropriate conversations that our students feel needed, to feel safe, to understand themselves better, to develop a healthy community, our teachers are ready for an updated curriculum. We've been waiting for a long time and, but I do, I do respect the, the comment about being all together when we move forward. The challenge will be getting us all together. There are some, while we have positions, we have positions on each end of the spectrum with, that none of this content should be included and on the other side that there should be more included in what we're, in our health curriculum.
And I would like to speak to our normal timeline. Typically after we have a program evaluation, it's usually within six months that we bring back the curriculum framework to you. This has already been long. The program evaluation was done on May 7th of 2014. Ron took a whole year to do this work. We also were, our original plan had bring, was to bring this to you for approval this past summer. Ron felt like he needed more time with his advisory and he needed time with teachers on our professional development day whenever we came back to school. So we have already extended this beyond the typical six months of a curriculum framework development that we typically follow with other curricular areas because of the sensitivity and because of the need to bring more stakeholders around the table and in the conversation with this. So it already is extended beyond our normal six to eight months of bringing to you the curriculum framework after you've heard the program evaluation.
We're talking about a broad, when you went through the initial review, you talked about FIAD, health and all the other components. So we would be holding up all the implementation of the changes.
And so I said there were gaps, right? And there's information that students aren't getting that is part of the standards. So, and, I mean, I think there's, you said there's, there's both sides of the spectrum, but I mean, this is obviously not a black and white issue. I mean, we're, we're talking about awareness that at an age appropriate level, I think we all want, you know, we want kids to have the information. And then acceptance, which you don't want to confuse with endorsement. You want to be, you want kids to accept everything that they encounter, whether it's other students or what they hear about in the news and that. So I mean, there's a distinction there and it's, you know, that's, that's where you, where I think some of the confusion happens is you, you talk about acceptance and we're not endorsing anything. We're just, we're teaching acceptance.
I would like to ask Mrs. Hopper's question. We have some teachers here, I don't know if, I don't know if they're prepared to answer, but what happens if we wait? You deal with the students every day, so.
My name's Tim Cordaville, I'm a health teacher at West High School. There is nothing new in this curriculum. I've been teaching all this information for almost 20 years. The one change that will occur this year in the curriculum is the addition of the LGBTQ Mythbusters in an attempt to respect and the wishes of the students in our building who are sharing with me that they don't feel accepted, they're experiencing a lot of harassment, and there needs to be more education about the LGBTQ students in our school and the community in general. And in an attempt to respect and, and support those students, we're adding that one lesson. So I'm, I may be the only teacher left in the district when these changes were made 20 plus years ago. And so we have been updating and bringing things up to speed all along. There was one slide that said, one change has been we have done a better job of defining and articulating the curriculum. What's actually been taught at the high school level for many years, we have been updating it, we just did a very poor job of articulating it and being transparent about the things that were being taught. And that's the effort that's been put forward here. And so when I go into school tomorrow, I'm going to be teaching everything that this curriculum is asking for and we've been doing it for a very, very long time. Comments were made a little bit ago, or excuse me, questions were asked about what are we going to do to help teachers get up to speed? Well, part of it is all the efforts these groups are making, but part of it is discussions we have in workshops about experiences we've had with parents and conversations and students and challenges and how to handle those. And, you know, one of the things we teach young teachers is, question was brought up a minute ago, what happens if somebody says, "I've got questions about homosexuality, I've got questions about transgender." There are clear definitions about what all of those things mean. We offer the definitions. What's a lesbian? A female who has a physical or sexual attraction to another female. And at the heart of that is a relationship and the number one relationship is what you build with yourself. And once you love and respect yourself, it becomes easier to love and respect other people. It doesn't matter if we're talking a heterosexual relationship, a homosexual relationship, there's a common thread and that's what we try to help our young teachers understand. While there's a lot to be educated about and a lot to learn, don't get caught up in the emotions of it. Remember the common thread. And if we know how to build a healthy relationship with ourself and a healthy relationship with other people, things are going to work out great. And so when we have these conversations, that's what we try to help get our young teachers up to speed, is just simplify it. And then as you get more experience and more knowledge, you can begin to build, you know, build the lessons and add, add more to it. But these things are already in place. You're welcome.
I think it's also important to note that as we, we are very fortunate that in St. Louis, we have the Children's Service Fund, which provides a wealth of services to our district already. And there's a lot of organizations on that list that we can still tap into. So we are fortunate in that way, but as we consider these external services, we will look at them very deeply and we will, in fact, Mr. Cordaville's class, we have myself, a parent, as well as the school administrator who will be observing the lesson in action. We're also going to invite the students to provide feedback and that's how we will approach all of our presenters of groups that we bring in to make sure they're of quality and to make sure that they are meeting the needs of our students in, in a positive way.
One of the other things that I've heard is that the character development program is not as well pushed into the high schools as what it is elementary school and middle school. And I guess I'm wondering, why is that when if we're not having a, you know, a formal education in health and sex ed for our 11th and 12th graders? That, and some of the students that we heard from tonight are primarily high school age. And it seems that, that seems to be where we're hearing some of the real need coming from, even though it's going, we're doing a great job right now with character ed at our elementary and our middle schools. And we've seen that in some of our recognitions that we, we did a couple of weeks ago. And can't we help in that area more if we can't offer more courses in these other grades because they got so many credits that they have to get and we're crunched for time here?
So I've invited Dr. Watson to come up and share comments if she wants, but I will say, Ron was the first curriculum coordinator to really look at the character education standards, commitments that were developed by our student services team and the action team that worked with that, and did an analysis of his curriculum to see where they were already in place and where they could be added to have them be more explicit. So Ron has taken the lead on that with curriculum, with the K-12 curriculum and the nat, and the natural links to that. And then we'll let Dr. Watson talk about other efforts at high school in general, not, so high school in general, not just with health and PE.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, Dr. Meredith, about Ron and his teachers spent a summer auditing the curriculum with the character standards that we have in Parkway along with our character competencies that you see in our elementary report card now and, and some of those connections are also on the OCG for the elementary curriculum. So yes, it, it is noticeable that our elementary schools and our middle schools have moved a little bit faster, have embraced the work around our nine commitments. But our high schools are also embracing the work. Remember, we have nine commitments and it is not as though everyone has to start at commitment one and work their way through commitment nine. So there are a multitude of things going on at our high schools that are related to the work around character education. One of our principals just went through the Leadership Academy for character education and has started to engage his community in the conversation about what does this look like at this high school? One of our high schools last year went through the process of adopting their core and performance values. So everyone is at a different place. Some of the things that our high schools are doing may not just be as visible as some of the things that our elementary and middle schools are doing, but they are on the journey as well. Does that help answer your question?
Does Stu Cabe go to high schools?
The question came about the gap earlier, I, I was thinking character education, so I'm glad you brought that up. But I, I think the Chelsea's leadership and point here, I mean, I think it's a lot, a lot is being done more at the secondary level in the last couple of years with LACE, our principals, assistant principals going through leadership programs. It has to start with leadership and that's starting to happen at the, at the high school level. Next summer, we're learning that the Character Education Conference is going to feature a big emphasis on character education and athletics. So I think there can be some other themes that can be developed around secondary students, elective programs and so forth. But we haven't had Stu at the high school, he certainly could be. If we kept Stu here a couple of weeks, I guess we, but, but there's all kinds of opportunities, certainly, you're right, Mrs. Hopper, to, to enhance the approaches. But I think we're on, we're on the journey, we're on the way.
I will tell you that over the past couple of years during our Project Parkway Character Education Advisory, we have had a consistent group of high school students helping forge that work forward. And they are also helping their principal forge that work forward in their building. So we, we do have some connections. You asked about Stu, it is principals who determine if their building is going to have Stu, but there are also some other activities that some of our high schools are doing with our, two of our high schools in specific have a specific program that they are utilizing with ninth graders. And so they are helping students- And so, they are helping students become leaders. And during the summer, they are training those students as to how to be good role models and leaders for our ninth graders. And they bring the ninth graders in before school starts and start building that community. And that is work around character education. And they are connected with those students throughout the school year, making sure that they do feel connected and safe and part of the community. So, again, there are different aspects of, of the work around character education that our high schools are doing.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Lisa. And keep those cards and letters coming and the board, we'd just ask you to, if you have questions, to get them formulated and get them back to these people so the rest of the board can benefit from your questions and analysis. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We really appreciate the time tonight to dig in deeper and continue to build a shared understanding of what the proposed revisions mean. So, thank you for all the time.
Can I offer perspective?
Please.
I, I had a chance to address the advisory group, I think, in the summer. And I indicated to them that I've been in a lot of districts in my career, quite a few districts, I should say, and this topic always creates a great deal of emotion and it oftentimes can really cause a great deal of angst and a lot of division. I will tell you, I'm very, very proud of the fact that in Parkway, we're not resistant to take on tough issues. And more importantly, to have the discussion like we did tonight, and I think through your committee, Ron, it's been an education, as people commented tonight. It's a tough issue. And Pastor talked about trying to meet a ground that we can all agree on. I think we can do that, hopefully. But it's, to me, I just want to offer perspective tonight to thank people for listening and staying here and being respectful of all the people that presented. I think it says a lot about our district and our community that we can have these tough discussions without people getting angry or people becoming so insistent that their views are the only one. So, I just want to say, I think, having watched a lot of communities and watched some, some things that weren't really positive as a result, I just want to thank the board, administration, the parents, students who came and really to think about students coming tonight and speaking from their hearts, I think is really a tribute to what they believe and value for not only them, but their fellow students. So, again, I just want to offer that perspective. We spent a lot of time tonight, but I think it was valuable and it says a lot about our community and our school district and, and the work that we're trying to do to make sure all, all voices are heard.
Daisy? Knock one out of the park.
I should have went first. So, let's talk a little strategic planning, shall we? Actually, I mean, I think even that discussion was a good example of the work through Project Parkway. It's part of our program evaluation, part of our system of improvement and kind of showed it in action. Actually, it was a great example. So, if we talk a little bit, the, the good news is here, we have a board that's well-informed. You get regular goal updates, that you're part of the committee work, that you have subcommittees, attend Project Parkway meetings, that you're part of program evaluations and your board liaison meetings. So, most of this is, is going to be review for, for our board tonight. So, your overall interest and involvement in the success of our kids should make this a pretty easy presentation. But broadly put, Project Parkway is our strategic plan and it defines our work and it was embedded. And our foundation was, developed our mission. And it is designed as a continuous improvement process. And I do think tonight was a good example of how that works, of how we involve and continue to involve the community in those processes. If you remember, even as we developed the house, the mission and vision was the foundation for that. And so, you see, as you move up the house, the curriculum and assessment and instructional practices and some of the things you heard about tonight are built around that mission and vision and learning principles that Dr. Meredith and both Ron and Rasmus referred to tonight. For this evening, kind of want to give a brief overview of some of the work of Project Parkway and really do some, some brief highlights of the work of the goal areas. Then really focus probably mostly on the work of our steering committee and the listening tour that we are engaging in this fall to get more feedback in, in our quarterly meeting themes. Also, I want to kind of point out this slide here because if you look at what it says, it says the goals, take a look at those dates, 2011 to 2016. That's this school year. So, that's part of the engaging in the listening tour. If you recall back when we developed our, our original goals, we went out and did a really broad needs assessment with over 30 subcommittees digging into the work, bringing back information as the steering committee wrote the mission and vision and then creating basically our goals and measurable objectives out of that mission and vision. But this year, we need to do a little bit more heavy lifting, get back into the work, do a needs assessment and actually really, really look at our future. This is, you'll remember the placemat. It's sort of a, it's a visual representation of how we're organizing our work. I know you can't read that. That's not the intention for you to dig in, but it's just a reminder that we pulled everything from our mission, vision, from our learning principles, establish our goals and then designed our work around those goals. We have a lot to celebrate. This was actually, I kind of went back in the archives if you remember, and I'm going to jump to the next slide too. So, if you look at, again, just visuals of the work of Project Parkway, not to get into the details of it, but when we started this, three years ago, when I gave this presentation, it was one slide. And so, the work continues and adds, and you'll see the growth of that even through this evening. So, we're looking into what will Project Parkway 2.0 look like. And so, it's exciting to plan for the future. But I do, I do have a warning, a caution, and so, I'm going to share something with you about that. So, sometimes I get stuck in my old traditions, so hold on playing that just for a second. And I'm, there's a weird phenomenon in my street. At about 3:45 AM, a van drives up the street and throws this rolled up thing out the window called the newspaper. And I go out and pick it up and I read that newspaper. And so, I'm stuck a little bit in there, but this is a look at the future. If you could, the screen before, there was a little tablet on there. And so, I get a little trouble at home sometimes about catching up with the times and stuff. So, I thought this was a good illustration of why we still have to honor the past to some extent before we, we jump right into the future. So, there are still some old traditions that we want to certainly hang on to. So, I caution before we really go paperless completely. Get it going? Viewers at home, get that going? So, getting into some of our, thank you, Dee. Some of our high-level looks, and some of those you'll hear about throughout the year when you have your liaison reports, but you'll certainly get a board report on each of those goal, these goal areas throughout the year. And so, that's the design. But as far as Goal 1 and 2, looking at our capable and curious learners, some of the major initiatives to work on this year, the implementation and communication of the new elementary grade cards, the growth of choice programs will continue, stronger emphasis on literacy initiatives, our instructional engagement strategies. A lot of you've heard that and approved that work of Kagan, and that's part of the instructional engagement strategies. And then our continuous curriculum updates and reviews. And part of that was processed tonight that you witnessed. Regarding Goal 3, and Dr. Watson was up here talking a little bit about our nine commitments, but our continued focus on character education and what that looks like in multiple programs, whether it's guest speakers, whether it's part of the engagement in the curriculum or whether it's our extracurricular activities or clubs or sports. Also a focus this year really on working restorative practices in our discipline issue instead of just maybe dishing out consequences, finding out different and alternative ways for students to learn more about what harm may have been caused as a result of any discipline infractions. We continue to work not only on our student character values, but also our adult character values. And that'll also carry over into Goal 5 with our personnel. Dr. Watson and Amy Joyce will be leading a group effort to, to talk about ethos and our adult character values. And then Goal 3 will also continue to look at models and structures for student support. Goal 4, one that was really, really spearheaded through Liz Morrison over the last several years, our professional communities and our professional learning communities. We continue to focus in growth and development in those areas, focus on the implementation and supervision of the PLCs. And then something that we'll really need to do is determine whether this is sort of part of our practice and institutionalized and whether or not by the end of this year, it really is a standalone goal or just part of our common practice. Goal 5, recruit and develop our staff goal. Well, well aware that we're underway of successful implementation of Kelly Educational Service that will continue, working in student growth measures added to our teacher and administrator evaluation goals, our adult character values, the ethos that was mentioned before. Also, support and development for our instructional engagement strategies. So, that goes hand in hand with goal areas certainly 1 and 2. And then we've got negotiations in all employee areas this year, so there's going to be some heavy lifting there. And then continued focus on a diverse workforce, one that more represents our student body and community. Goal 6 area, finance, facilities and resource allocation. Some of you may be attending North High on Friday evening to see some of the initial part of the Kelly Sports Marketing Process. Also, just recently, you heard presentation on the Fund Balanced Growth Policy. We also have our Prop S Continued Projects. A lot of the safety upgrades are keying and visiting management strategies, continued energy and efficiency work and review and improvement of internal controls. So, that's, that's kind of our goal, 1 through 6. And then those were pulled and I'm going to show you another busy, busy document right here. So, this is kind of modeled after our placemat. And again, you're not going to be able to, to read each one of those things, but just to give you a visual, we pulled some of the high-level things. But each one of those categories is the initiative and work that the action teams and departments that kind of support those goal areas and work through the action steps will be doing. So, again, so those two slides you saw earlier with all the initiatives, you can anticipate there's going to be another one added by the end of this year with the work that's going to be accomplished through Project Parkway. So, to get to some of the work the steering committee will be doing this year, you were first introduced this concept at our board retreat back in May to kind of get the concept down. And we had some work to do to kind of finalize that and how would we operationalize it. But the idea of the steering committee was we're sort of at the end of that five-year planning process. So, we needed to assess where we were, how have we been doing on our goals, so we do some type of needs assessment, but we also needed to get some feedback on where we want to go. What's, what's the future direction look like? And so, what we have designed is the steering committee worked to go out and actually collect that data in person with focus groups and interviews. So, I'll talk a little bit about that. So, one, the purpose, why? We want people to know that we're listening and responding. We also want to increase the engagement. That was, that was part of some things we heard. We're getting the same people and the same voices all the time at most of our meetings. And so, how do we increase our presence and get communication and do it through a personal touch? So, we will go out and gather data and feedback to help develop Project Parkway 2.0. This will be part of the input for developing our goals and measurable objectives for the next five and 10 years possibly or reviewing our current one. We're not exactly sure how it may restructure, reshape and inform our plan. So, we'll, we'll engage the larger community by going out, talking to teacher groups, parent groups and student, student groups at the sites. Not just our school sites, but we'll also engage our non-school building sites as well and our own employees. So, we have already split up teams of six or seven people with one of our superintendent action team members leading each of those teams. We've developed and talked a little bit about the work of the steering committee, but we've worked to develop a protocol and a tool, really questions to get feedback. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. We've been assigned those schools and stakeholder groups. So, we've communicated with our team and we're in the process of actually scheduling those interviews now. So, we had our August workday with our steering committee and we went through, and I'm going to go ahead and move to the next slide. So, we had our over 50 members at that meeting. So, it was a large gathering, but we were able to divide up in group, presented this concept for the first time for many of them. We tried to communicate both through phone call early by invitation through phone call and then an email invitation to get them to, so that's basically, so the steering committee knew what they were getting involved with, what the time commit was going to be. And then we presented the concept at the meeting and talked about what we're, what we were thinking. We formed our teams and they, the, the group really developed what kind of questions we might ask as we go out on our listening tour in our stops. So, that team put together a whole bunch of questions. Then we took our leadership team and Dr. Nathan Tyson kind of ran us through a protocol where we teased out questions, we tried to create themes. And we finally decided a final of eight questions that we will take to each site and gather feedback on our teams. So, the, also just to validate this, you know that we're doing some work with Hanover Resource, the Hanover Resource, Research Corporation, and they have also kind of along with us parallel, we asked them to kind of understand our concept, the work that we're doing and in a conference call. And then they kind of did some work outside parallel that actually really aligned and validated the work the steering committee did in their first meeting. So, we, we have some validation that we're on the right track if we're going to gather this input. At the end, we could, we could hear from over 1,000 voices in Parkway when we hear this. Now, we're going, that means there's going to be some heavy lifting for the steering committee to sift through that and make sense of all that data and put it into a plan that hopefully comes before this board in May and June of this year for approval of our next strategic plan. So, in addition to our listening tour, we're also working on a community and staff survey, kind of a how we're doing and where should we go future. We're also researching how we can use maybe some of the focus group information to engage the, the community online. So, for those people who aren't part of a steering or a focus group, there'll be opportunities, whether it's through the survey or whether it may be through an online device where they will be able to offer feedback as well. And then also for one of the first time, we're also sending off our graduate survey to actually have Hanover do an analysis of that to give us the last three years of data and trends that our graduates have, have shared with us. So, we think that'll be a useful, useful bit of information as we plan for the future. A reminder, I think you all are well aware, our Project Parkway quarterly meetings are set, the dates are set, our theme, and I think it also aligns with our conversation tonight, how we respond to an ever-changing world. But our first meeting in September, I believe it's the 21st, at South High will feature the author of 21 Trends of the 21st Century, Gary Marx. In our November meeting, we will also have an outside speaker, Ray McNulty, who I think many of you met, maybe not all board members have met, but an educational consultant and an expert in his field as well and actually just a phenomenal speaker. So, he's, he's very engaging to listen to as well. February, March, we're, we're going to have to kind of play that out a little bit depending on what information we've gathered. We should have collected all our data through our listening tours, so we may have to have some work sessions at that meeting to sort through that data. And actually, in my conversations recently with Hanover about all the data that we collect, they think it may be a valuable thing to get the participants and broader community involved in analyzing and going over that data together. And so, that would be a pretty big undertaking if we have a couple hundred people at a Project Parkway meeting to engage them in a, in a data protocol session. But it may be something, we're, we're taking on a lot, so what the heck, we might want to give that a shot. So, the other thing that's happening that always goes along with the Project Parkway quarterly meetings are our advisories and our program, ongoing program evaluations. So, you'll see those breakout groups this year as well. So, y'all with me? I feel like you're falling asleep on me here. Wake up. Wake up. Yeah, it's getting chilly? Come on. So my closing thoughts, I think Project Parkway took us from good to great initially. That was part of our thing, but I think we could be great to totally awesome in the next five years. And so that's our goal. With that, any questions? And I do have all the other, the other rest of the team for all the support of the goal areas are here with me tonight, so they could, if there's anything to speak.
Having been on the steering committee since the beginning with Dr. Sortino, I think we're both very excited about the change and going out and listening.
I was pleased with the new members of the steering committee, their backgrounds, their enthusiasm and their, you know, their passion for the district and what's good for kids and.
Yeah, it was incredible makeup, the group, and a great variety, great, a nice diverse group. And I think all the memberships should, it should be in your, along, attached in your memo that was sent to you.
I was excited, too, that it's all about kids. So all these great people coming together and going to schools and asking questions about, you know, what can we do better for our kids? So that's where we get to that awesome.
Yep, we'll get there.
Yeah, we were kind of wondering the direction we were going to take this year. And this structure is going to be great, really great to get that many people involved with providing ideas and concepts and, you know, directions for the district for the future.
Yeah, and we think we have some pretty provocative questions there, too, to really engage people thinking and really kind of prodding, too, a little bit of futuristic thinking as well.
I mean, it permeates everywhere in the organization, which is what you want to see happen. I mean, everybody from the bus driver to the superintendent.
And they'll call you on it when they see you not acting, mission aligned, too.
Well, we thank you for your leadership.
Yes, as well. We had a great year with your leadership, I guess. It's been, is this the second year?
I think it's your three under this.
The third year.
Yeah. I saw you, you chased off the rest of them.
Keep the cycle going.
I'm still enthusiastic about it.
Desi's concept of this listening tour, I think, is really a stroke of genius. I always hear these stories about, you know, 400 people coming to meetings. I think we would have had trouble doing that, you know? I think that was 1.0 and people were pretty excited. I think the idea of going out to the schools and as Desi said, we hope to get 800 to 1,000 responses, plus more maybe online and other groups, I think is a more current way. And it really shows our desire to really engage people in smaller settings so all voices can be heard.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't want you to think I wasn't involved in tonight's meeting, but I did get a text from Don Centi that the Cardinals won.
It was an afternoon game.
They pulled it out, they were losing.
16.0, call for a special meeting, none. 17.0, our next scheduled closed session, it's anticipated that we'll have a closed session held on Wednesday, September 30th, 2015, at 5:30 p.m. here at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. No recess, no closed session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So move.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries 6-0. At this time, we are adjourned. Thank you very much to everyone.